May I get a motion that we only discuss those two matters for which we went into closed session? One item under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A3, discussion concerning acquisition or disposition of publicly held real property, and one item under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A7 concerning consultation with legal counsel pertaining to bill for probable litigation regarding a zoning violation and a code violation.
So, a second.
And can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Pan, you're... Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clance?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
And is there any modifications to the public session? I think so, okay. I'd like to welcome all of our guests and the visitors online and in person. Move on to the joint public hearing and the town council and planning commission. This will be a planning commission case zoning amendment to allow ground floor apartments in the B3 Central Business District as a special exception.
Now, do we stand up and go up there, or do you want us to stay here?
I think we should be... I mean, so people on, especially the planning commission can hear you if you can hear the microphone, I think that would be helpful.
I wanted to ask just in case.
Yeah, I don't know. I just think, you know, with online meetings, we need to have people able to hear you, which is a hard enough thing with everybody wearing masks, so that is...
Uh, Luke, if you want to click through the slides.
Alright, perfect. Is everybody here? Darlene?
There's a limited ten people in the room, so some of them are going to have to sit out for the meeting for while you do the presentation.
Perfect.
I think if anybody up in here can go after it.
Alright, well, thank you, gentlemen, for allowing us to be here today and presenting to you again regarding some things that are happening in downtown Chulaski and some of our ideas moving forward. So today, we're going to talk to you about our proposal for some first floor apartments in downtown Chulaski. I'm Luke Allison, this is Austin Strom, and we're with Aggreg Capital.
You should have started again. Luke, can you hear me, buddy?
Yeah, I thought that that was the conversation.
Oh, we wait... Oh, does the planning commission need to go into session? Did I miss... Before we start, could to be allowed a planning commission to call and set some words? Sorry about that, my apologies, that's my fault. Yes, sir. Ms. Bellcher?
Abson.
Mr. Connor, here. Mr. Haley?
Here.
Mr. Jonas?
Here.
Karen Meyer?
Here.
I'll turn it back over to you.
And Luke, before you go, buddy, if you don't mind, I'll do a quick staff report, okay?
Alright, perfect, thank you.
Alright. The town of Chulaski, well, good evening, everyone. This has been a little bit different for us, but I think we're doing okay so far. The town of Chulaski has received a request for zoning amendment from Aggreg Capital, Agent Luke Allison and his colleague Austin Strom, to eliminate the following language under B3 Central Business District, Section 4.10.12-2, special exception of the zoning ordinance. To eliminate dwelling units are prohibited in ground floors and added dwelling units are permitted in the ground floor. So again, they're here to request a zoning amendment to the special exception section under the B3 Central Business District zoning code that will allow in mixed-use buildings by special exception, dwelling units in the ground floor. We'll eliminate current language and add dwelling units are permitted in the ground floor. Some background here, while working with VHTA and DHCD, secure grant funding at Locust, pretty kind of what's made, Luke and his team were informed that the project, to resign by these organizations for the project to utilize more of the building space for housing. Simultaneously, Luke and Austin and others were being informed by multiple community members of the interest that seniors in particular had in living downtown. However, many are unable to do so because of the issues that surround the daily use of stairs necessary to access the second-floor residency. Ultimately, they felt that providing such dwelling use would not only benefit their project, but would benefit the downtown area of the whole. As known, we are in the process of seeking to revitalize the downtown, and so we're excited to have individuals like Luke and Austin that are interested and we're thankful to have them here this evening. The packet and the agenda packet includes some other materials that you will see. It includes the staff report. It also includes their application and then the site plans for the project that was mentioned, and then also the requisite section and the zoning ordinance that we'll be reviewing. Now, they want to make clear that the intention of this hearing is not to grant the application approval for this use. Rather, the hearing is for the sole purpose of approving or denying the amendment request, which would allow an individual to request this use under Section 4.10.12-2, one C, special exception. If such request was made, it will again have to be reviewed by the planning commission and town council, and that request could be subject to or limited by conditions made by the commission or the town council. With that being said, if any of you all have any questions now that I can answer, I'll answer, but Luke, I'll turn it back over to you, buddy, thank you.
I'm probably an apologies for jumping the gun there. Any questions before we get started? Hopefully, I'll answer all three questions.
I think that was on us, sir.
Well, again, we're Aggreg Capital, and we're here to talk to you about what Brady just said. So, our downtown revitalization, which came to completion at the end of this 2019. So businesses are expanding and relocating in the downtown area. We just had the board shop move in, very excited about that and see where that can go. All four of our apartments are also rented, so this next cycle will be a new cycle of new tenants and switching over. And also, the regional demand for housing, you know, these entities like RVTC and with Blacksburg and with Virginia Tech and the students there and accepting too many students, you know, Chulaski is a great opportunity to have affordable housing. And we also have the attention of the regional, state, and federal agencies, as Brady mentioned. And we have an amendment that hopefully will turn downtown into the next destination, or the new River Valley, you know, cycling and the theater and the arts, and so we're very, very excited about that. Yeah, so we learned a lot from our first project. We learned that by doing projects like this, we are responding to a great demand for whether it's smaller commercial buildings or apartments. You know, when you see the final product, like, most of you have seen in these apartments, you notice that the high quality of these, you know, the affordability of these apartments. But that's us looking at these. For somebody that's 95 years old or someone with a knee issue, this is what they see. It's a daunting task for them to even look at these apartments. So, yes, there are a lot of advantages to having, you know, elevators and whatnot, but these stairs are, it just eliminates a large portion of our community. Specifically, our older community and those with mobility issues. So, I got permission from David Clark, the previous mayor, to, I asked him, I said, "When you saw these apartments, what do you think?" He said, "They're beautiful, I love them." But I was automatically disqualified from living there personally because there's no way I'd be able to walk up and down those stairs every single day. So, that being said, it is difficult or impossible for someone like him or my late friend on the top photo on the right, SUC Corzenasky, we picked him up every day for a couple of years and brought him down to our office. He, as we were working through this process, he never got to see these apartments because he's wheelchair-bound. So, those are a lot of members of our community that have these mobility issues. These apartments, the way they're laid out, are ideal living conditions for the elderly or somebody with mobility issues. But, you know, we're excluding them because we can't get them into the apartments and they can't traverse those stairs every day. So, the private-public partnerships and support, we work with many great entities, private and in public. So, Wiley Robinson from VHTA, he's given us a support letter for first-floor apartments. And VHTA, I'm sure you guys are all aware of, we use them a lot for our different lending options and grant financing and permanent financing of the project. And we also talked to Jonathan Sweet, the county administrator. We presented this to him, and he thinks that the idea is great and he supports it. And of course, representatives from the Mitchell Law Firm, Locust through Opportunity Virginia, DHCD, Brown Edwards, and all the other entities that we work with. So, when it comes to investor support on our next project, we'll be giving almost $3 million from investors into the Chulaski downtown, 437 West Main Street. The project is one of the largest commercial spaces in the downtown area, and it's a great retail and housing attraction. And hopefully, if we can bring more foot traffic into the downtown area, it'll boost the population and of course, also the foot traffic. Yeah, so this is going to be about a $3 million project, you know. And when it comes to housing in these Main Street areas, like, I have a quote from a developer in Johnson City that he's doing something with code down in Johnson City, very similar to what we're doing, we're asking for here in Chulaski. He said, "Unlike 100 years ago, there aren't many businesses that need 5,000 to 20,000 square foot spaces." So what he's saying is, the traditional large commercial space idea is not as necessary as it used to be. And when it comes, when it comes to these buildings, such as this, with like almost 10,000 square feet in the bottom floor, you can still have a large enough space for a commercial, as you see, there's still 5,475 square foot on the front of the building, and then still enough room for three apartments in the rear. And so this is the back of 37 West Main Street, you see in the left picture, that is the pocket park, that brick, the exposed brick right there. And in the right picture, of course, that's just another view of the backside. So this is where the apartments would open, and this falls in line right with the CBPG plan that the town came up with, you know, the creek walk with the lights and the pocket park. And another quote, which Luke and I really liked for Mr. Abram, was "Certain buildings have scenarios in how they're laid out, that you could provide some ground floor residential off a neighboring alley or other thoroughfare." And with 37 West Main Street, and again, that pocket park and the neighboring alleyways, we think that this could be perfect for bringing potential residents into the downtown area. And that, that special scenario is being opposite from that Main Street corridor, being on the backside of the street. So now, you know, we're in front of you guys, we're asking about having this change so that we can have this, these accessible and safe apartments for part of the community that otherwise just would not be able to be tenants in downtown given their mobility limitations. One last thing was, you know, downtown districts, they have these Main Street corridors, and embedded with them, you know, ground floor residential has been restricted. But elsewhere downtown, it may not make sense for the ground floor restrictions to exist, given the fact that it's not on that Main Street corridor. And this is something that was put together by an organization called the Congress for New Urbanism that takes communities that are trying to redevelop to attract new businesses to their downtown. They stated that in order to make these businesses thrive, you got to increase that foot traffic by having people living, more people living in that area, because those are the people that will be those customers outside of the peak hours of those businesses while they're making money, so, thank you.
I did have one question. So, the, and maybe this, I don't know if this is for you all or for Brady. The amendment is just, the amendment to the code, so it's allowing for a special exemption, but that would still require there to be a special process for somebody to come in to ask for that before. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be as of right, it would be by, for, kind of, planning, is that right?
That's correct.
Thank you. Just want to make sure I understood that.
So, to go along with that question, is there a way, because obviously, I think, I think everybody, and Luke, I've got a chance to talk to you, you know, kind of recognize the concern maybe of first-floor residents would be that you'd end up with residents in spaces that were intended to be for retail or commercial space and needing somehow to have, is it possible, have exemption that would define, you know, the intentions of that exemption, you know, to be not in a forward-facing retail location, that it would need to be a circumstance that did not, that was outside of those boundaries.
That special exception process, if you all approve the removal of that prohibition, would require this group to come back to them and the planning commission could stipulate not only access from the rear, but other provisions in order to allow it, because that gives them the opportunity to shake that. And they might include in that special exception a limit on the number of apartments. They might say, I think their original idea was three, but at one point, when they first came to you all some months ago, it was only one. So, I mean, it's a fluid kind of thing, but that's a decision that you and the planning commission, the planning commission recommending something to you, and then you all ultimately making decision if in fact, this particular item is passed.
I definitely believe, you know, that it's important that we distinguish what the ultimate goal is. And I think that open for the exemption that we use and the fashion, that would open the door for the negative side of the conversation.
And so, and I'll just say this, you know, after talking to some different people and Luke and I, with this situation, you know, we think that it was important, you know, not every building is the same. We understand not being able to put apartments, you know, you would never want apartments on the Main Street side, but having them on that backside with, you know, whatever restrictions that were put on there, I think, would be great.
So, and I'm not sure if this, Brooks, was what you were driving at. So, we want to change the language to dwelling units are prohibited in the ground floor to they are permitted in the ground floor, which I understand. Is there a need, and I just want to make sure I understand, is there a need to expand that slightly just to eliminate the, somebody trying to come, wanting to come forward with a special exception for a storefront?
And that's why I wanted to bring it up.
Right, and I think that's a good point. So, we may, I know that clarification may prevent, I know this group obviously understands that I think apartments actually that are accessible on the ground floor on Main Street itself are probably undesirable. Do we want to leave that open for a special exception conversation in years to come? Or do we want to just, we want to add that to this existing request, or word in such a way that it eliminates the Main Street?
Well, I think that's certainly a possibility, and since you are having a joint conversation, even though they're on Zoom with the planning commission, they could certainly consider that as they deliberate, follow in the public hearing, donate for recommendation to you all. That recommendation may or may not include something like that, but certainly, it's within the purview of the council once you get their recommendation to modify that in any way to make it restrictive. But in this case, where it sits today, if that language is changed, as has been requested, nobody could put any kind of an apartment on the first floor without going through the special exception process. That hopefully would take those matters into consideration. But I can understand certainly, you know, what you're saying, that would make it easier in some respects for people to know that in advance, that we would not consider that if that's something that you all are interested in.
That's what I was going to ask, I was going to ask if the planning commission had any questions or thoughts on that, because I'd be, they, since they deal with these processes more than certainly I have ever had, ever had, I'd be interested in what they have to say on that particular subject or any questions they might have.
I like the concept of seeing it on the first floor, but how have you thought about seeing this, going down a long alley to use those apartments?
Yes, so we've been asked that, to use that long alley to go down into the apartments?
So, maybe you can't drive, you can't take a big, you know, through there.
Right.
It's a long, pretty long walk.
Right, no, I understand, and when it comes to the difference between walking from a parking lot to taking, you know, 24 stairs up and down, there's a safety factor, really. And my grandfather, he's got a cane, he's just had back surgery, but, you know, when it comes to walking, he tells me that he's got to keep moving. If he sits still, he's done. But he also, his bed is no longer upstairs in his house, and those are six stairs. So the thing is, is when it comes to traversing from the parking lot or from a new business in downtown or just walking the streets to the apartment around back, comparing that to going up and down the stairs is, the safety is, it's a little, it's different. I, to me, I think.
Even if they were on the Main Street, they still can't park right in front of it because there's no park, you know, at full time. So they're still going to have to walk, is what you're saying?
Exactly.
And I know this is an unusual situation that you all are dealing with, with the planning commission not even being in the same room with you. But since they have to deliberate this matter first, maybe we can make sure that if they have any questions of the applicant before you all both open a public hearing, because they'll have to, you know, make some recommendation to you. I think it would be helpful, hopefully, by the time we have another joint hearing, all of us will be able to be in the same room together. Unfortunately, we're dealing with some restrictions, but we appreciate those of you who not only showed up for the meeting, but for those of you that are with us by Zoom. So, if there are any questions from the planning commission of the applicant, we'd love to hear those.
Commission, can I add one more thing to my last statement? Regarding the elderly, you know, that's one thing, to remove that safety issue of taking stairs, but when it comes to somebody in a wheelchair or somebody with a cane or a walker, you know, regarding taking stairs, you know, there may be like another impossibility, not just an inconvenience or a safety, but it's just impossible for them to live in our downtown because of the stairs compared to the safety issue as well. That is it, that's all.
Yes, you can go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I do want to commend you for doing a great job of explaining why this is a great idea. What I really would like you to address is why you think this wasn't allowed in the first place and why, what other concerns we might consider to think why we wouldn't want to do this.
So, well, one thing I had brought up to Steve and many others when we were presenting this. So I also live on the Main Street, I think I mentioned this the last time I was up here, is parking is obviously a huge issue. That was one of the things I brought up to everybody before coming up here that I thought was going to be the big, one of the biggest questions. And I know the town, and I'm talking to Darlene, that they have few, they have some spots. I think there are ones behind the theater, and you know, they're kind of spread out. I think there's actually a map right there in the packet for parking. But that was one issue that I was thinking about, and also, the parking that's currently on Main Street right now, there were new signs that were put up, but parking is not being enforced, I mean, at all. They put tickets on there, well, warnings, I should say, and after that, it just, it never was, it's never been enforced. I don't think there's been one ticket issued on West Main Street since the parking was supposed to be enforced. Should have seen the look on his face when he put a fake parking ticket on his car. Yeah.
We have not only enforced, we have told.
That's all that I had. I was just going to say, I think that that's in place because of the importance of small businesses and that being the fabric of a downtown and a vibrant Main Street. And when that code was put in, I believe that that was so that, you know, 29 West Main, our office, someone wasn't walking by and seeing someone sitting on a couch watching TV, you know, in the 48, you know, or, you know, something like that. And I believe that that is why that zoning, and like I said during the presentation, for that to be a zoning issue for the Main Street corridor, I believe makes the most sense. There shouldn't be any housing on that Main Street corridor. But on the rear of the building, you know, where it's all more private, you're not going to have these giant storefront windows and the need of those, and the businesses on the rear of the building, you know, there aren't any businesses on the rear of the building. I think that's why that zoning ordinance was put in in the first place.
Thank you, that's all for me for now.
Can I stand something from the staff's perspective? You know, I wrote down some concerns and advantages, or says, and I have staff that were being this proposed, and I think the purpose of zoning, in my opinion, is to, one, maintain the character of various districts from various areas within the town, and two, to separate incompatible uses. It's really keep two incompatible uses from being right next to each other. That would prevent the development of that area or the functionality of that area. And so I think we've actually made a great mistake, in essence, in the downtown area. A downtown area would not intended for people living right on Main Street to be sitting watching TV and people to be walking by seeing that. That wasn't the intention of the downtown area. It was for the retail establishments, and it is for retail establishments, including stores, shops, restaurants, and then in some cases, offices. However, I think in this regard, I think, you know, Mr. East made some great points that, about keeping this to a certain part of the building. And I think that's the question is, is would apartments in the rear of the first floor of these structures change the character of the district? And I think that's something that I kept coming back to, is, does it change for that are not Main Street facing, but to have some certain number, two, three, however many, on a rear side or side of a building with rear access to allow some of that first floor living to some of those residents? And Luke and Austin had mentioned in purpose. So, I don't know if that provides any more clarity, but that's sort of our black hole process, is that clear?
In order to kind of directly, more directly to these questions, it's really part of the reason the ground floor residential is often allowed, and originally wasn't included, is because when the, when the zoning came in the beginning, the existing uses were not ground floor well. And historically, the building weren't used that way, there's upstairs housing, and as far as I know, there's still some access to the upstairs housing from Main Street. So that would continue to, and that's something we need to talk about, I think, whether we want to allow it or not. I think that's always been thought up. So, I'm worried more about, I think at this point, that it is flood flooding and to have people living on the first floor, it is flood during the night. What effect that going to have, how that going to affect developers and folks living there. Maybe one of our primary concerns. maybe one of our current concerns, but there, there was reasons, there were reasons that, that it was done that way. It's done for business and, and there's reason for that, but I don't agree with whatever.
Um, I guess the other, I mean, I'll make a point to follow, I, there are, there, there have been in my time here, ground floor apartments in buildings in this district, whether they were
Still are.
Legal or not, I mean, there is, there is precedent there, um, so that's just another consideration I think to deliberate.
Mr. Haley, you have any questions? Mr. Carter?
No, sir.
Mr. Mayor, uh, we're done with our questions.
Okay. All right, we go ahead and open the, if you wanna go ahead and open your part of your public hearing, and then I'll open mine.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, um, this will, will end the public hearing, uh, for the planning commission, uh, we'll do that in concert with, uh, town council. So, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to call it the word?
Yes, and
We'll let you get your call.
We'd like to open, um, now we'll open our, our, our public hearing for the public comments to the town council on this matter. Okay, you can go ahead and close yours since, if you want. Mr. Mayor, Ma- Mayor, you can go ahead and close yours then, and I'll close mine.
Okay, both the public hearings?
All right, and I'm closing towns. So we'll close this, uh, public hearing of the town council. And then they can retire to do your, um, discussion issues now.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on then, thank you gentlemen. Anyone else have any questions or anything you need from them, or are we good for them?
No.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Please, I'd like you to reach out to us individually or whatever, ask us any questions that you have, and we'll provide any information that you're, you're looking for.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. All right, so let's move on to the consent agenda, if you look at December fifteenth, twenty twenty, council meeting minutes. And then if you want to approve those, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve December fifteenth, twenty twenty, council meeting minutes.
Okay.
If I can have a roll call, please, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Cloughs?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
We'll move on to the memorandum of understanding county community and cultural center.
Mr. Mayor, I just would remind you all that a draft of this agreement, uh, was passed out to you all at your, um, I think it was December nineteenth meeting. Um, it has been reviewed by the town attorney as well as myself, and given some of the conditions that were identified there, uh, it, at Mr. Rega's suggestion, we did act, ask for the housing authority to be added as a signatory uh, to the memorandum since they, uh, technically hold title, uh, to the county school and would in fact be, the, uh, entity that uh, would transfer title, uh, of that property at the point that the construction, uh, was completed as per uh, the memorable understanding, this is something that, uh, we have been asked to put on your agenda so that it can be made a part of some applications that are in process for additional funding. Uh, we have yet to, uh, arrange for a housing authority meeting, but are making the effort to, to do that, um, within, uh, the balance of this month. Um, and I would just remind the council that uh, you did, uh, when you found out that there was a still another vacancy, um, on the housing authority, Mr. Penn was appointed to serve in that role, and then as soon as we are able to convene, uh, that, uh, group, uh, they will have an official item according to the state code of, uh, selecting a chairman and vice chairman and secretary if, uh, necessary. So we hope that they'll be in a position before the end of the month to also be a signatory to the agreement if in fact the council was prepared to approve it this evening.
If there's no discussion, then I move to approve, uh, I move to, well, how, why, how would we say that? I move to, um, have the town, I guess, in the person of the mayor, would that be the appropriate signatory? I'm not sure. Um, or maybe it's just moved that we approved the never ending book of understanding as written, having, and having been blessed by the, um, staff and town attorney.
And may I have a roll call for that one, please, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Cloughs?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, as to your next order of business, uh, we, I shouldn't say we, I, um, did not schedule the transit people to be here until seven o'clock this evening to allow time. Hopefully for the planning commission to deliberate and you all to take, uh, your action, so my suggestion would be to skip over that and go ahead to some of your other items and then pick up, uh, where we left off, as I mentioned to you all earlier, when the planning commission is prepared to come back with their uh, recommendation, and then if we finish the rest of it early, you all can have a quick break before the seven o'clock presentation.
So, I think we'll just move on to the council comments, we'll do that part, and we'll start with Mr. Penn, if you have any comments. How are we gonna drag this out if you're not? Mr. Dawson?
I, I got a couple of things, it really just kind of arose from, as, I guess it's probably not completely tied to the conversation with, uh, thirty-seven West Main, but um, as far as, uh, the actual zoning itself, but that alleyway that is behind there, um, I'm just curious to what the regulations or rules are for that alleyway, you know, thirty-seven West Main, as you can see in the pictures, backs up to a very tight alleyway space between that and the creek wall, and we're talking about having residential doors opening up into that space, but as near as I can tell, it's still accessible or allowable for vehicles to use that. And even in the pictures where they were talking about that, that's the pocket park, that, that's actually not the pocket park, that's the back to the next building beside of it, and there's a van that parks there in that space that's driving in and out of that area right beside where we've created, you know, pedestrian access of a pocket park. And so I think, and I could be wrong about this, I think that is still allowable driving space.
Well, that particular, uh, location, the garbage truck, the county operated garbage truck does go through that alley to collect garbage, there are already some buildings on that section that have rear access, um, in fact, I see people coming out, you know, and using that alley just to walk, uh, and you are correct, there are occasionally cars that go through there. Um, if we, you know, if we saw that there were issue there, perhaps there's some markings that could be made that would delineate, you know, walking space. Right now, people walk just about anywhere, you know, in the alley, either close to the creek itself, because many people where we've had the plantings, the tree plantings put in, uh, choose to walk there, and then there are others that work, walk very close to the buildings themselves, but it is, uh, open. Now, a portion of that alley behind Mr. Jean's property, I believe, uh, was closed or is in his ownership, so it's not technically used, um, as either a drive-through area so that the, um, garbage truck, you know, has to be very careful, and the garbage truck actually comes through, uh, the alley, um, that is the second one that is lit, not the pocket park, but the other one, uh, to get back onto Main Street and then to cross Main, you know, to go to the opposite side of the street to collect garbage. So there is some traffic there, very, very minimal at this point, but
Right, I just think, you know, I, I guess I'm thinking long-term, in the line of the conversation of redevelopment, uh, downtown, what, what do we, what do we expect the use of that alleyway to be? If, I just, in my mind, I ma- I understand that there's very limited use of that currently, whether it's pedestrian or vehicle or, or whatnot, but the thought of it being possible for an individual to open up their door of the house and eat a, and hit a moving vehicle, it seems, you know, it seems like a conflict in use to where, if that's the direction that, you know, if our hopes are is to see pedestrian use of that area, then it seems that we, that maybe we need to look at what would need to be changed about garbage pickup location or, uh, you know, that kind of stuff to actually create that space as intended pedestrian use only. You know, maybe, you know, to study what, what conflicts would that cause for maybe any of the other residents in that area? Because currently, it looks like it's conflicted, you know, in a, maybe in a potentially unsafe way. There's not access for a, a vehicle and a pedestrian in most locations through there, it would take the, you know, one or the other to move out of each other's way. And I understand there's not much use right there currently now, but if our intentions are for that, or, or these, the property owners are, are looking to have the ability to have people coming in and out of there with their groceries and, and things of that nature, that maybe that's, we should be something that we look at. And then the second part of that would be, as I said, parking's not supposed to be on Main Street, so there, uh, these developments are needing viable attractive parking lots that somebody would actually want to use. And I think, you know, I was looking at it on my way in today, you know, even on the map, they were talking about that we have marked parking lots on the map in several locations, and I think councilman East brought it up last time we were talking about this. And I kind of looked at it myself, all of those parking lots, the, the court, you know, the courthouse parking lot and the parking lot beside the, the apartments by the on the, beside the, uh, library. Uh, and all those parking lots are marked as prohibited use. They all say, you know, prohibited, uh, uh, permit, uh, or, you know, parking only or something of that nature, so as a whether someone who's wanting to make use of the businesses, um, the signage in, in two out of three of the main parking lots basically say, don't park here, you know, there's nothing that says to park there as a resident. The one that is flagged for public parking, you know, it's not striped, it's not, it's not paved well, there's no lighting really, and it's just, so there's in, in the one area that we say we want you to park there, it's probably the roughest looking parking lot we have. And I just, I think that's tied to this conversation as, you know, something that's, you know, might, might even be higher on, uh, part of, I know we haven't discussed about it a lot over the last two years, but in the development of downtown, as much as that's been discussed, I, I don't think maybe improving where people actually would want to park, maybe hasn't been discussed a lot.
Well, there are a couple of things that are in the works, and one of you, I believe it was Mr. East, mentioned, uh, recently that uh, you wondered about the lighting of the downtown, and we did do an inventory of, um, the lighting and both the police chief and the public works believe we have sufficient lights, but not the right kind of lights, let me put it in, in the bulbs, and I've had a conversation with, uh, the AEP people about it, and they're getting ready to do a massive overhaul of the lighting so that, I'm not sure where we would be on the list, but those would be, uh, replaced, uh, with the higher, uh, looms that you would see in the future, so we don't, it's not that we need to have more light fixtures that, with lights, but we need to get
Better light.
The light, the better lights, uh, in there, and they're really not planning, as I understood it from this one contact that I made, to change those until the system for, uh, AEP changes completely, and then they're gonna all move in that direction, so I think we thought when we did the inventory that maybe we'd find we needed more, uh, locations with, and that doesn't seem to be the issue. The other thing I want to tell you about parking is that, uh, there is adequate parking currently on the street and in the parking lots that we have, and the parking lots that we own or that we inherited from the former parking authority that I think we had at one time in the town, um, are available and at no cost, uh, at this point in time, I would anticipate that if we are successful uh, in our economic development efforts, there will come a time when we may have to charge for parking because we may have to create more parking, one of the things that we have looked at is in implementing the signage and hopefully the enforcement of the parking restrictions, we're also looking at, are there options for people who live downtown? Uh, in a couple of communities that I have worked in previously, you had what I call residential permits. And so it allowed people who were residents in the immediate area to park different hours than those that are posted. Um, I would tell you that handicapped parking according to, I believe, the state code, I'm not sure about the local code, allows handicapped individuals to park two hours longer than what is stated on the parking signs, um, so that that can be of assistance. The problem seems to be for people, you know, who like, um, have shift work and have irregular hours, and so neither of those, you know, seems to help, but a, a parking problem is a nice problem to have, uh, because it says that your community is growing, and we're certainly aware of all of that when the council agreed, uh, to, um, subordinate the loans that we had with Mr. Cutchfield so he could get his permanent financing for his other building. Uh, we did have to certify that parking was available, not that it was gonna be free, but parking was available in, uh, downtown spots, I'm sure that as we get more development, other developers may ask uh, for something similar, and there will come a time, if we're successful, uh, that we will have to charge for parking, I hope we never have to go back to meters because that gets to be a very expensive issue as an initial investment, some communities that had meters took them out and years later put them back in, uh, it seems to be a vicious cycle. Uh, but you are pointing out some very real problems that if they're not thought about in advance, they will create real headaches for us in the future, and we need to be looking at all of that, and hopefully the planning commission in its, uh, review of a comprehensive plan, which they are about as we speak, and will eventually come to you all, are looking at some of those futuristic needs and giving some suggestions as how we approach it.
Thank you.
All very legitimate concerns. And I'm glad to see you all are thinking ahead because that's important.
Mr. East?
Um, just to piggyback just one item, fire access on the rear alley. Um, if, if we look to move forward, uh, it, when, when, should someone come back with a special exception, I think we're gonna need to understand that, uh, and what's required, if anything.
I do think, and I could be wrong, that parking, and not parking, travel on the road or the alley is one-way. I don't think I've seen two-way traffic there, um, I, and in fact, the question came up about, um, the alley, uh, that's between Mr. Jean's building and the next building, about whether or not it was two-way, and it it would be very hard to accommodate two vehicles.
Right, and I'm not, yeah, I'm not, yeah, accessibility for fire vehicles.
For the fire vehicles and that. Again, a good question.
Uh, and then the other, one other question I have is, uh, most of it, as you guys know, I sit on the, uh, the Friends of Pete Creek River Conservancy Floodwater Mitigation, um, um, ward or meeting, whatever you wanna call it, it's, uh, these guys are doing great work, guys and gals are doing a wonderful job, a lot of good information. One of the things that, um, they, they, they're working to do is identify, well, you know, low-hanging fruit, if you will, since we've had some of the issues with, with flooding, certainly this year was probably one of our worst. Um, the low-water dam, uh, which is located, uh, on First and, what's it, Duncan Bridge, is that correct?
Yeah.
First and Duncan Bridge, right, just near there, uh, I, I know we're, we're making some effort to identify ownership. Um, the Friends of Pete Creek River Conservancy are scheduled to make a presentation on February Um, the Friends of Pete Creek River Conservancy are scheduled to make a presentation on February sixteenth. They may not be ready on, well, it's. I'm hoping it's sixteen.
Sixteen.
Okay.
The work session is sixteen.
Okay, so, uh, what I would like and what I was going to ask of you darling and Spencer is, is, is it possible to have some idea of the ownership and/or the path we need to take if we can establish ownership of that low water dam by the sixteenth? I think it would open an opportunity for good discussion on how we want to move forward. The low water dam is like, you know, as I understand it, I'm a layman, but these guys, these folks are working on it aren't. But as I understand it, having more water flow would remove a lot of that sediment and stuff that's below the low water dam, which is a, and that's a hotspot for flooding, so, um, so is, is that feasible?
Well, Spencer and I were talking out in the hallway about that very matter. And Spencer, you may want to share, you know, part of what we were discussing as perhaps the best route at this point.
Yeah, there was a, the understanding I had when it originally came from, to me, from, uh, the staff in the engineering department was that we needed some title search. And, and in looking at it, you know, your typical title search goes over there at the courthouse and you're also looking at, say, the GIS to find tax math numbers. And so we had inquired with, uh, somebody that does, uh, title searches here routinely and, and at the same time I was thinking about it. And the, the issue really is that the state, uh, unless there is a specific grant of property underlying, uh, creeks, rivers of the Commonwealth, the state owns the property. So then the issue is who, you know, who do you deal with at the state? I, we haven't found anything indicative of somebody specific owning the property, despite that we've, the fact that the Friends of Pete Creek is, uh, used to dealing with the fact that between the walls there in the middle of town, there's property owners. And that came most likely from when they were straightening the creek out, that that was property that was already owned by somebody. And so that's why somebody owned it rather than the fact that the creek never would have been owned necessarily by anybody specifically. So I guess the long story short is also talk to the Vir- Virginia Marine Resources Commission because they are involved with any of the, uh, strengths. Uh, DCR apparently dictates and works with low water dams. But in speaking with the regional representative that handles that, something that's already happened and, and dealt with by the Friends of Pete Creek and by the Conservancy, uh, that they had contacted this same person back in the summer. Unbeknownst to me again, because I'm just doing, I, I was going and saying title research forward, trying to find out who could, you know, give us some answers. Turns out that I was doing the same research that has already been done by the Conservancy. And ended up talking to the party at, uh, Virginia DCR who said, look, this is a, we've already kind of looked at this. We looked at it back in the summer. This dam is not of the size and height that we actually regulate, therefore DCR doesn't regulate it. And that person really couldn't give me a, a path forward other than saying, look, you need to talk to DEQ and you'd want to look in your land records to see, well, our land records haven't, you know, we can still look at it to see, but the likelihood, especially since there's not any tax identifiers to it, uh, the likelihood is that you're not really going to find anything very easily that would establish somebody isn't owner. So then what you do is you look at who are the owners on the banks of the property? See if they have any issues with it. Um, it appears to me that at least on the north bank of the property, there's a slight sliver that goes between what is now Mason's Cleaners, which are owned by the Fattises. There's a slight sliver in there that looks like it's owned by New River Land Company, which is Myron Austin's brother. And then right beside it is Jim Dandy. But it looks like the terminus, just in, in looking at our GIS of that low water dam, touches the Os property on the north side. And then there is a property on the south side that used to be an Os property, but it has been sold off. So I would think that the plan going forward would be to make contact with those parties and then most likely to do some sort of order of publication, just to see if anybody else has an interest. Cause I think that you could sit here and search forever and you're searching for something, you don't know what, that, that doesn't follow the normal research of, of a particular parcel of land. Uh, and, and that would be the way they would get forward. I actually talked with somebody, talked with somebody at the Conservancy today too, and they were kind of sharing that this is what they were asking in the first place. So I, I guess if I'd have talked to the Conservancy folks upfront, that might have prevented some circular research. But nonetheless, they were saying, hey, we're just trying to identify if there is in fact, you know, an owner that we could go to that, that we try to get the approval from them. And if, you know, if not, we're just looking at people that possibly have objections to it. And so I think that that's most likely where you're going to be is you're not going to really find anybody easily to say that they own it, but who are the parties that may object to it?
So and I, and I think that, and you've addressed my question somewhat, the, my interest is, is in how we, uh, get from point A to point B, so we're not continuing to have the same discussion. I think it's an important, anything regarding flooding that's considered low hanging fruit, I think is, behooves us to do what we can. Now, as far as the notification, does that responsibility, I, I was under the impression that would fall back to the town to make, to actually make those notifications, is that an incorrect assumption?
If the town's going to be the one removing the dam, then I would say that it would be up to the town to make the notifications. Uh, it certainly has, the governing bodies and the involvement with these different parties would be the most likely folks to move forward with it, but the town of Kielaski no more owns it than anybody else, I guess, if, if. So I, I think we're, we would probably be stepping into that role, uh, and we would be stepping into that role, but I don't know that it's, there's anything definitive that would say that the town has to be the one doing it. It sounds to me like that, uh, that the, the Virginia Marine Resource Commission would, would be a party that you go send in applications. If there's permits that are required, they would review that, uh, as, as part of what we're doing. What they, what they had kind of indicated in our discussion was that they don't really get into determining who owns it or who all needs to be, the, the parties involved. They say that's usually something that does gum up the situations when they've had situations, uh, get contentious before, as you might have somebody that objects to it because, hey, upstream, there may be a bonding effect that somebody likes and they're a landowner and, and they don't want you to, to make any changes. But I think ultimately what, if, if, if it's in the town, the town's the party that wants to do something about it, the town can take the lead, make the notices and try to go through the processes in, in the best way possible to, to make it happen. It is unclear who owns the dam.
So it, it sounds like notifying the adjacent property owners or, or.
Yes.
And, and then, and then if there are objections there, then you move forward to a public notification. And at that point, that's further than we are now. So I mean, that's something that we can, we can actually start that process on.
And the only thing I would add is that, uh, the town certainly, uh, in the time that I've been here, heard a presentation, uh, from, uh, the group and agreed with certain things that should be done. And to the extent that we have resources, I think we should assist. But I cannot suggest that the removal of the dam, if we are in fact able to clear, you know, ownership or anything else, is the town's responsibility. What it might do is be the impetus for the friends or another group to see if there's some funding that might be available to help do that.
And I absolutely agree, that's a good point.
So let's, let's not proceed with the idea that if suddenly the order of publication and everything else says, you know, anybody can tear it down, don't expect the public corp staff to be able to do that, even though I understand in years past, you know, maybe an employer too was sent down to the creek to try to, uh, clean up some things and we just can't go that far. Okay, so I just want to make that point clear.
That's a fair, that's a fair, fair point and I, I, I certainly agree with that. I, I'm more interested in the, in the documentation and legal aspects. And how do we help them move past that? And then, and like you said, funding, you know, find out what's funding, funding's available. I'm sure that's not going to be a cheap process or an inexpensive process. But I would at least like to be able to cross those, you know, first threshold or two, uh, in the, in the direction of, of any remove, whether, you know, regardless of who's.
Mr. Mayor, the planning commission is prepared to share their recommendation. If you want to stop, the council comments long enough to receive that and then we're going to be close to the seven o'clock.
Yeah, we can do them and then we'll do the, our Kielaski area transit and then come back.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilor. Uh, the planning commission, uh, at the direction of Chairman Meyer, uh, has recommended to, uh, permit the zoning amendment. I had a, a signed resolution here, um, that I can submit to the clerk of council, which details, um, their recommendation. They did recommend it without any, uh, conditions and they felt that because it is a special exception use, that per project basis, it would be best to go into that special exception process if there was an application and then, um, subject the project to limited conditions. I can't imagine. So if you guys have any questions for me, I can answer, uh, but if not, that's our condition.
Uh, actually I was thinking about that afterwards and I think that makes the most sense. That, because you never, you don't want to, the whole point of this is to allow developers to come in and present something. And it doesn't mean we have to, the planning commission or else have to accept it. But I don't think if we're going to change the grounds upon which they can get a special exception, adding a whole bunch of conditions and qualifications and stuff like that, and I think that you, you can't, no, no statute's perfect. The statute's going to go to every circumstance and I think we have to sort of rely on, you know, the folks, you know, our staff and our, and our professional, um, you know, and the, and the people on the planning commission to sort of vet those projects appropriately and provide them with, you know, appropriate feedback. And I think, you know, Mr. Deal should be able to, next time a developer comes to them and says, hey, here's what I've heard from the council. Here's a, these are questions you should be, you know, expected to answer. Why should, you know, question, why should this, you know, if you know that this is maybe the case, you know, make the good point, make the argument. Cause there might be a reason that we want to allow, you know, a ground floor, um, you know, dwelling or, or, or other, you know, or lodging use or something like that. There might be a rationale for that, um, so that's my opinion.
And I sort of, I don't, I don't, I don't have real strong feelings about it. I was just, uh, you know, I was just tossing it out there. I, I don't disagree with that. I think, uh, when the time comes that that can be discussed as it may be.
Well, if you want, you can delay your conversation about it and taking action till after you have your present, other presentation. If you're, you know, to give everybody an opportunity to digest not only the recommendations from the planning commission, but for you all not to feel hurried with that. It's up to you all. Um, I do know that, um, the clerk has gone on to get copies of a resolution that would support, um, approving the change, uh, without any changes. But if you want to change that, that, you know, we can do that as well. Uh, so it might be good for you to wait just a few minutes to have that in front of you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Appreciate it, good for me.
Yeah, we'll just. The Kielaski area transit presentation.
Let me get them for you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. So some of you already, um, since I've been here, so I'm Monica Transit Manager. So thanks for having me this afternoon. Do I need to wait on darling? So just a quick background on the transit, um, started in October first, two thousand and five, uh, with a grant from DRPT. On September fifteenth, we switched to a big strout and ADA route because the, the demand response had grown so much, people was having to wait so long to be picked up. So we switched to that. We also have the ADA, um, routes also. After the first year of adding this big route, just route, we've seen that the outline areas are still needing people to be able to get to the bus stops. So we put in a grant with the RPT and we were able to get our consultants to start the procedure to add this feeder route in. However, COVID got involved, so that's put us a hand on that right now. So after putting it on hold for several months, we thought, and I thought we were going to be able to pick back up with the consultants, have our public meetings, but unfortunately because of the group settings, we still weren't able to do that. So now we've put that off to the summer after vaccines have started. But there's still one, um, one apartment complex that wasn't, we wasn't being able to reach to, and those aren't by white. So after putting this, um, route change on hold postponed again, asked the RPT temporarily, could we add a small change without having to have our public notices? So what the RPT is allowing us to do is to add one additional stop to the two routes that we currently have. That additional stop will be at the DMV, which allow us to then be able to go down Bob White to those apartments to be able to have the ADA that has apartments that we couldn't reach had we started this route. So we put that, that'll be put in the paper, it'll be put on our basic page and that'll be taken effect on February the first. So we'll be going out to that apartment complex because we know some of those people out there, and we know some of those people need those ADA applications that we can go in and get that process started.
And I'm sorry, you, you probably said it and I missed it. When, when will that additional, has that been started, the additional route or the additional stop?
The additional stop will be, um, February first.
February, okay.
So just then, all the way through. So, um, COVID has also impacted the transit, I'm sure everyone knows, but right now we're only able to have four passengers on the vehicles at a time. So what we're doing to try to keep our ship flowing, if that vehicle gets full, we just instruct the driver to drop off at the nearest place where the next person's going and get back on the route so that we're not having people that have to wait for the weeks to get back up. Basically, the passengers have been very understanding during this time. There's also, um, there's no fares right now and, excuse me, and for the, for this physical year, the transit will continue to be fare free. Um, we've received CARES money from the RPT that will support our programs in the additional expenses related to COVID in order to support the drivers and the passengers and to keep them safe during this time. All the passengers are wearing masks. The drivers have a plastic shield that goes around them for additional protection. And, excuse me, and the additional CARES funds will support the program a hundred percent for this physical year, twenty twenty-one. At this time, there's no promises of a CARE Act going into the physical year twenty-two. And right now twenty-two, um, grants will all be applying for, through the RPT that's due February the first. Um, and at this time, we would hope that the state stays up the funding that, that has been awarded to us in the past. So with that being said, we would just like to get a commitment from a, um, town council for the seventy thousand that we've requested over the past several years, many years, um, to support us for our physical year twenty-two.
I have a couple of questions. So my understanding is you, you guys have forty-one vehicles, is that right?
So, um, Pulaski Transit only has twelve vehicles. We have senior services and Pulaski Transit. So we have a total of about thirty-nine vehicles total, but only twelve of those are designated for the transit.
So I guess it's completely separate funding for, for the senior services?
Correct.
Vehicles?
Right. Actually, two different programs under one umbrella.
Does the, does the towns take care of the maintenance on the senior services vehicles as well?
Uh, the few that are in town, um, they do. But like we start, senior services covers the whole New River Valley. So in Spohley, we got our vehicle service, then Spohley, the Christians River, Montgomery County, just whichever area that the vehicle, you know, get on service. And same with fuel, like, my senior service drivers that are in the town of Pulaski gets fuel at the town shop, and then most of my other drivers gets fuel at Speedway.
And, uh, so just to make sure I understand correctly, the seventy thousand dollars is in addition to any maintenance costs and fuel throughout the year on those vehicles, is that right? Or, or is that, is that covered in different funding?
Um, so we pay that, um, that money on our vehicles, but Kian sends us a invoice each month.
That's how I would turn it over.
And the labor and the labor also.
Um, so my question is, obviously, COVID sort of makes everything kind of weird.
Right.
What's the, how's the ridership sort of volume and efficiency, and how's that changed over the past, say, like, three to five years, if you, if you know?
Okay. So ridership has changed significantly due to the fact that before the route switch in, um, eighteen, we were pretty much like on demand, which meant every single person that wanted a ride called dispatch, told them where they wanted to be picked up at. So at that point, we were getting easily six, seven hundred phone calls a day of people that wanted to be picked up. So after we went to the route change, huge difference during the time, during that on-demand, during the demand pickup, we also had created a twenty-dollar monthly pass, which caused ridership to really go up because they could go, you know, anywhere in the town for twenty dollars, whether they wanted to go out however many times a day. So then when we went to the, um, the set route, you know, we're not reaching all those outline areas anymore, unfortunately. So we couldn't make any changes until the first year, but then after the first year, we also then had to have consultants come on, and we had to do that whole process again and have our public hearings. So that's why we're trying to go through that process now, um, and get a feeder route to go to those outline areas, to bring people into the loop so that, so that we can get ridership back up.
But so it sounds like when it was on demand, you were about six, seven hundred riders a day? Would have, did that be accurate? And then, so what did it, how much did it change after? Like, what would be, I mean, you don't know, that's okay. I'm just curious, did it go up like five percent, fifty percent?
I'd say it probably went from like heaven, like, this is just off the top of my head. I can look at numbers and send you.
Yeah, please do.
Um, in fact, I think Darling has the, um, that ridership report, but we, I can send it again. But probably like maybe seven thousand a month down to two thousand a month.
Wait, I'm sorry, say that again?
So when we were still on the demands where everybody was calling in?
Yeah.
It was probably picking up seven thousand a month.
Okay.
Then we went to this route change, probably two thousand a month.
Okay, so it's, it's going down significantly, like?
It's down significantly, yes.
Okay.
So that's why we're trying to get that feeder route in to be able to reach those, um, to bring, to get people in those outline areas. So we're still, we're still using the same amount of drivers that we were before. So we didn't, we didn't lose any drivers when we went to this route change. So, so driver hours are still, are still the same. We still have the same amount of drivers that before. It's just that people's not calling in, not having to wait an hour or an hour and a half before they're getting picked up. And then, um, adding this, um, the DMV stop, I think is gonna be huge because the apartment complex down on By Boyd was the only apartment complex that we weren't able to reach right now on that route. So this will allow them to be able to get their ADA so that we can get back to pick them, those people up also.
And what would be the, if you had, I mean, obviously, there's people who just ride because, like, need to get a ride. How many, would you say, what's the breakdown between, like, I assume you said ADA, you mean people who are disabled and need, so like, any accessible transit?
Right.
What's the breakdown between accessible versus non-accessible? I mean, those, those people who are calling for that reason?
Right.
I mean, I, if you don't know, that's, that's okay. I'm just curious.
I'm gonna have to print that sheet out before I came in. I, I, but I'll have that on that sheet too, and I can give you a percentage and.
That would be great. Thank you. Is there a way, cause it sounds like, is there a way to, to sort of make a hybrid system? Like have regular routes and also have some on-demand to add to, cause it sounds like there could be some more, I mean, I don't know. But I'm just curious. Is that something that the consultants are looking into, or is it just?
Say that one more time.
So it sounds like there's people who aren't being reached. And I don't know, you know, how your funding structure looks, but it does sound like, I mean, is there a way to sort of try to get some of these outer outline folks?
Right, right.
And, and then also, I mean, I don't know, cause I don't know what, what that feeder line looks like. But I know that, you know, I think it's Norfolk, they just changed their bus system around so that they try to maximize the number of people who are within like a quarter mile of a bus stop. Um, and so they've actually, you know, changed, radically changed some of their routes in order to ma, and maximize that. So, and then minimize the number of routes themselves, so people, less sort of switches between stuff. And I don't know if that's applicable for y'all, but I just didn't know if that's the kind of thing that the consultants are looking at.
So right now, what we have is we have the two routes that have reception points.
Mm-hmm.
So what we're looking at is making one big loop.
Okay.
Um, but then, uh, the feeder route on those outline areas that aren't, aren't reached right now, that would unfortunately, that would still have to get on there to be able to transfer. But then if they were, they wouldn't have to transfer down on these two routes if they needed to go to the opposite routes.
Okay.
And then the ADA, um, vehicle is dedicated just for those persons.
Oh, I see.
They, they are picked up at their house and dropped off at where they need to go.
Oh, okay. I, I didn't understand that. Thank you for clarifying that.
So the, and just for clarification, I was, I don't have anything, I mean, the, the, the significant reduction in ridership happened when you, with the on-demand?
Yes.
So it's un-COVID related?
Correct.
So, okay, so you're, you're speaking about prior to COVID?
Right.
What is the, I mean, I, I'm assuming, I, I believe, I mean, I don't know, but the goal of your organization is maximize ridership for as, as inexpensively as possible? Is that accurate?
Yes. And, and, you know, we realize, um, you know, we love that the transit grew the way it did, but it had grown to the point that, you know, we were gonna have to either get more drivers, more vehicles, which then ups the cost. So to keep it, being able to ask for level funding, then that's why we decide, that's why we talked to the RPT. And then they suggested going to this set route to try to.
You purposely contracted a little bit to, to, to live within your means, I guess.
Right.
Is, is your goal now, you mentioned increasing ridership or, or picking up an extra loop or, or some apartments?
Right.
Is your goal, do you have, is your goal to go from, like, two thousand to five thousand? I mean, what's the goal of the organization?
Um, numbers in general, I'm not sure, but our goal now is to reach a lot of those seniors that, or, you know, just people in general in the town of Pulaski that can't walk to bus stops, that can, that's not able to utilize the transit right now like they used to because we're not going on, on case nights to pick somebody up to bring them up down. So to find that outer loop, and we've got places that, that we've looked at where people could get to be able to get back into that.
Is there a number, I mean, is there a number? I mean, is there a number of, a certain number of riders, riders that, I'm just curious, I'm trying to understand.
I'm just, I'm sorry, I, I was, I'm sorry. I was thinking that when you guys made the route change, that, I was just trying to think back to when you guys presented to us that, that that was a forced decision for the funding from a state or federal level. Was that, is that not required from them for us to be on that system? Or is that, or was that a choice of ours?
Well, so we talked with the RPT. Um, most of transportation is, is not on-demand. But we kept talking with the RPT and telling them that how our program, and, you know, how it was growing and growing. Um, and I think even some people on town council at the time would get complaints that they were having to, to wait so long to get picked up. So we were, you know, that was part of the process, but two that made us thankful.
So, so the fixed route system is not required, it's not a requirement in order to get the funding from the state or federal level?
Honestly, I'm, I'm not one hundred percent sure about that. I know that, um, Patrice at the RPT has said that we were one, you know, very regular transit systems or, or the way that we work.
Right. I understand that there was, uh, that there was a negative aspect to how it was being used.
Right.
Um, I, I was just under the impression that it, we had, that it was a forced change. So there is some flexibility then potentially without losing funding and making changes?
Yes, but, but you still, we have to go through that process of having the public hearings and the public meetings before that, all that can take place. And, and unfortunately, had it not have been COVID, we could have already had that, had that in place.
So is this, forgive me for my ignorance, is this the state funding level loaded here? I, I know the county historically has been level loaded as far as the amount of funding they're providing. Um, I know we have for the last number of years.
Right, and the county's been a little thing too for the last many years too. I was trying to look at the, um, well, like for, um, for twenty, I think what Jennifer told me is that we're in hopes that it'll stay the same with the state and federal money. But until that, until that time comes, you know, until that fiscal year starts, we really don't know what that will be.
And as far as your, your, I know COVID's a little, little different, but as far as your financial outlook with level funding, much improved? You have reduced ridership? I understand a lot are expensive as, expensive as, have stayed the same. The reason I'm asking these questions is because I think, um, Mr. Penrose, you know, a, a, a good question for ridership, trying what the dollar did. So I, I'm just, I, I just wanted to understand that in perspective.
Right, and, um, I think as Jennifer, I presented it, I made it one time too, is that unfortunately, even though that we went to this set route, we didn't reduce riders, we, I mean, um, excuse me, we didn't reduce the drivers or the amount of vehicles that we had. We still managed it with what we have to keep the wait time at every thirty to forty-five minutes so that they're not having to wait an hour to an hour and a half to be picked up. And this past year, um, unfortunately, due to COVID, we didn't get to have our golf tournament, but we're talking about that again too. So whatever monies is made on that will also go towards that matching also.
You also, if someone needs a special exception, you know, if they can't get to the, they can go through some, a process and get you to come to pick them up at the.
Correct, that's our ADA application.
Mm-hmm, okay. Cause I've sent a couple that have called me myself to talk to the senior center and then to get in contact with you, so.
Yeah. And, and my sister Candace, uh, said that Amy's called her recently on several, so, yeah, yeah, we work on those.
But isn't there a notice requirement for that, that you have to give a couple of days or one day notice?
Twenty-four hours, mm-hmm.
How much?
Twenty-four, the day before.
A day before?
Yeah.
And if someone gives you a time, say, I need to go to the doctor at two o'clock today?
Mm-hmm.
Um, how do you arrange for the return visit? So you get dropped off at two, but I haven't been to a doctor recently that took me when he said?
Right.
The time, uh, so how do you manage the return visit? Cause I'm told that's a concern by some of our citizens.
So what they, what the dispatchers do is they try to work with the, with the person. They still have to get it on the books about what time they'll be finished. If they're not ready at that time, we, then we just ask them to call, and we make sure that we, well, we don't leave them stranded. We make sure that we, that we get them back. Because, you know, like you said, sometimes you get, I remember there was one doctor, you're there for three hours before you're, you're finished, so.
Is there any other questions for her today?
What are some of the routes or things that are done with the senior center vans that are, the, like, the other vehicles that you use? And what, what, what happens with them? Where do they go and what do they do?
Okay, so our senior service vehicles, they, um, they take people to non-emergency medical appointments. Those people are sixty and older. Um, we take people to our friendship cafes. And we also deliver homebound meals, and all of those programs are all in the New River Valley, not just on the town of Pulaski.
So really, the gap on these ADA issues should, would be, should be, or you have an overlap of service there between se, seniors that are also maybe in the gap or qualified otherwise through this ADA can be serviced through the fleet that you have that's the transit or through the senior service?
Um, so what they would have to do, and we talked about this too, and help people understand that once we, uh, went to this route, because some of those people that are over sixty can call the agency on aging and get transportation set up, which we contract with and do the transportation for the agency on aging to get those people to the doctor. And we also, before pre-COVID, we would take them shopping also if they needed to go shopping that way also.
Okay, so there's multiple resources then for people who are over sixty?
Correct.
And then for those that are under sixty and need that special service, they need to have the ADA application? And that there may be a little more trouble just because of the, the, the other vans or doing senior center stuff is that the area transit, you may have less resource as far as the specific going, picking them up?
Right.
But that would be people that are under sixty.
Right.
And when people call in, do they have the op, like, if they call in for the transit?
Mm-hmm.
Is there, is somebody that kind of walks them through asking if it would otherwise go into the senior center? Or is that kind of up to them to know that ahead of time?
So the only, um, well, we talked a lot about that and helped people, once we were not going to everybody's houses and picking them up. But we also, if somebody's sent in an application and for whatever reason, their doctor didn't think that they were, that they should qualify for ADA, then we work with those people and we trail them one-on-one that there's other options, that we know that there's other options that they could use to get to them.
Okay, so if they call in for the service, there's an interaction and kind of internal analysis where he tried to figure out which service fits them?
And even if they're under sixty, they'll, we still try to help them find a, a, another resource.
You, you know, Monica, we have a mobility coordinator that works with anyone under sixty. And also, just as a, a point of information, Medicaid pays for medical transportation for those that qualify for Medicaid. So they have that option also.
She's referring to the mobility coordinator program. They can serve people of any age, so there's options that we can refer.
So that, so, so what you're describing is through the senior center, through Pulaski area transit, or through the Medicaid transport, that really starts to shrink the component of folks who should be challenged to need the ADA service here. We still have them.
Correct.
But there's different, there's, there's different things that cover different needs and transport.
Right. And then there's also those people that fall through the cracks, so the mobility program can help, you know, with those people also, those people also.
Thank you. We thank you so much.
So just before I do, I do think I need to see if I can get a motion on if there will be a level funding before I submit my grant on February the first.
Uh, do you want me to, I'll make a motion? I'll make a move, motion that, um, we, uh, for, um, we will be, so I guess the question, I guess, let me make sure I'm motioning this correctly. That for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, that we will continue to provide the same level of funding that we have in the past. Is that, is that correct? That's a motion.
So, can I speak after, can I talk after the second or?
Yeah, just then.
Is it after the second? So I'll second it, then I have to. Uh, I, I would like to see in the future, um, in, you know, when, when. So I'll second it and I, um, I, I would like to see in the future, um, and, you know, when we first say in the past, you've been able to provide some kind of breakdown of what you guys are doing and what your goals are and where you're headed, uh, which I think is very useful information. Um, I'll be frank with you, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable because we're just kind of going status quo here. But I get it, like COVID's been weird and there's a lot of, there's a lot of, a lot of different, you know, things going on now. So I understand that, but in the future, I would like to see, uh, and I would actually like to see when I think Mr. Reese uh, asks some questions that, that I think that you're gonna give us the information on. I would like to see that information, basically, you know, uh, where the organization's been, where it's at, what your goals are, um, and, and, you know, just some overview of expenses and stuff, just to kind of have an understanding of where that level of, the seventy thousand dollars is.
And I was, I was gonna say too, I would like to start getting quarterly updates, whether it be in person or by paper. So if y'all tell me how you know, I would like to do that, I'd like to, to do that movement forward also.
I mean, I, I, I think to Mr. East, I think, you know, some sort of sense of what's our ridership level, um, you know, what number of people who are, you know, disabled there, although as accessible problems are being served? You know, um, you know, for, you know, like, you know, and then at some sense of expense, you know, are you, you know, and it could be a run rate kind of thing, you know, we're at the same, at the same level, we were, you know, and then, you know, if there are large expenses, you know, we purchase new vehicles, whatever. And then also, I mean, I think to, you know, what, 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 what maintenance costs through the town? And, and, you know, if you want to differentiate between the, I mean, I don't know how it works, but, you know, it, I think what we really need to do is, as stewards of the town's money, you need to sort of say where is it going? And that you're, that you're in good financial shape, um, at the very least. Um, so, you know, and it, it could really be, I think, a one-page document. Um, and we can refine it, you know, if you, if you give us something, we can tell you we want more of this, less of that. You know, we'll try to give you feedback. That sounds, I'm, I'm not one, I'm speaking for everybody, but I.
I, I agree.
Mr. Mayor, if I could make just a comment, because I think you've all received my memo and, you know, that I met with Monica and Jennifer, um, back in December. And there are two issues that I think, uh, need to be looked at, um, in the future. One is the fact that, as I understand, I could have the year wrong, uh, this program's been in effect since nineteen ninety-four, I believe is the correct year, and the fare has never changed in that period of time. And the answer that I got, um, is that if fares increased and that revenue increased, then there'd be a reduction in the federal and state money. Uh, I do think, not just with this program, with, with a lot of programs, people value what they pay for. And it's a little bit unreasonable in my mind to have that period of time where there's been, uh, no increase. And yet it seems like the only other option that was explored was the pass. And she mentioned, you know, what a gang buster that was. The other thing I would say to you and I would ask, uh, is that as long as we have the kind of system that we have, that the drivers actually stop at the stops. Because the complaint that I get repeatedly is they kind of slow down and if they don't see anybody at that stop, then they just keep going. Um, and if they don't stop at each stop, then you don't really have a true idea of how many stops you can make in a period of time. I'm not saying they stay there forever, but I know the senior center has people who wait inside and they can't get out in time for the driver to necessarily see them. So I do think encouraging them to literally, if, if it says this is a stop, then there ought to be a stop. A literally stop of the vehicle to give an opportunity for people, uh, to ride it. And that's the comment that I've received most frequently in the short time, uh, that I've been here. Um, and I would also say that I've worked in places where, uh, fares increases were resisted for many years, but it didn't necessarily have a negative impact on ridership. Uh, but I think it, uh, is a value proposition that people need to appreciate, uh, what they're receiving. And there are costs that will not be able to be contained forever at a, uh, level funding. So you need to be thinking about those things for the future.
So, and one thing I would just ask all of you, I would encourage all of you, if, you know, if you hear complaints or you hear people say that you don't see the driver stopping at stops, just, uh, please let me know so I can address that. Because anytime that I'm told anything, I just make sure I follow up on it and just, you know, just like wearing the face mask when that started, you don't have to stay up because the drivers over and over and over. Make sure you're wearing, make sure, you know, not only you're protecting yourself, but you're protecting others too. So, you know, I want to make sure that we stay on top of that, so. Yeah, and the other thing, I'm talking about raising the fares, you know, if you, if you raise the fares, then that does lower the state and federal monies, which then in reality could mean that we have to ask, um, for more support money also.
I, I also want to point out that a lot of transit systems are actually moving to zero-dollar fares, Richmond for instance. And then, and this isn't just in risk throughout the world. And the idea is for two reasons, one, it actually increases efficiency, because, you know, and it decreases driver, because they don't have to worry about money, you don't have to keep money.
Right.
There's no risk of money, you know, that there's, so they, it increases the efficiency. And also because it actually increases ridership and, you know, to me, transit should be about providing, you know, economic, you know, it, it's an economic driver, you know, if we get people out to doctors, we get them out to grocery stores, we get them out to other places, we're hopefully seeing a much larger than seventy thousand dollar return on our investment. And that's, you know, when you spend money on transit, it's the most effi, it, it's one of the most efficient ways that you can dri- drive revenue growth. Um, you get much more dollars back in tax revenue in transit than you do on roads. Now, I know our roads are, are state-funded, but it's just, it's something to think about because every time you have four people or eight people or twelve people in a van, that means that there are probably ten fewer cars on the road. Which means there's less parking issues, less issues with, you know, wear and tear on the roads, things like that. So something to consider, it, it's a, it's a complex, it's a complex thing, but it, it's something to consider.
Well, that, and, and to your point, that's, that's my only concern, we, you know, and I think this conversation, you know, we at least had that opportunity to see you guys present a few times and is if the purpose of a transit is to drive the use of that transit, get as many people around as possible, that's the sole purpose of it, is to cover as many people. If we were at seven thousand people, and I know some of that's duplicate multiples because they were riding it a whole lot more than they probably should have in some cases maybe. So I know that number's probably a little bit inflated. But you say, if we're using the same, if we have the same expense, same amount of driver hours, but also we didn't change anything but reduce ridership, if it's not a forced change and the system was able to handle it before, maybe we need to clean up some chaos, then there was no benefit. You know, it was only a negative impact on the system at that point in time for the same expense, same amount of hours, same amount of wear and tear on vehicles, everything's, everything's a fixed cost based off, you know, what, you know, the information you guys have provided to us. The only thing that's changed was in the past, that, that it felt like that, that was a required change. And if it's not a required change, then what's the benefit of changing the system? If all you're gonna do is reduce the amount of people that use it? And so I really think that's something, if it's not required, and I'm not saying go back to chaos, there's, there's, if the purpose of the system is to, is to, to get people using it, then, then somewhere we all say, you know, in, in simplifying the system for ourselves. You know, and so I, that's, that's the only thing that, to me, it doesn't, doesn't make sense to me.
I, I'll get back with the RPT and just, and get some more graphics from the other.
And I, and I, as I recall, and that, and Berks brings up a good point, as I recall, you know, with this being about maximizing ridership, which I suspect, I, I think it is, to your point, um, I do agree with Darlene that there's certainly a, a value, that people need to understand the value in riding. Um, as I remember the way that this weird math that they had going regarding the, you know, the state and the state funding and that, uh, and, and as you increase your revenues, um, so I, so I understand that. Um, but what I, what I recall from, from several years past, the cost per rider was in the three dollar and sixty or eighty cent range. It was, it was very high. And then we were, at, at that point, we, there were a lot more people being transported. So my guess is your cost per ridership is through the roof at this point. Um, and I don't know, and maybe you can address that, but th- those are interesting things to know. So, so we're not serving the people as best we can. If the cost per rider went from three dollars and something to six dollars, I'm just throwing that out because I don't have the numbers. But I mean, that's something that is certainly important to Mr. Dawson's point and to Mr. Reese's point. Yeah, the idea is we get more riders for less, you know, and, and, and maintain a, a certain level of quality service.
I'll, I'll look at that and send it off soon.
Like the quarterly, the quarterly update would be, would be great.
And you normally make your application in February?
It's due February first.
Is that every year?
Every year.
Okay. It, it seems like it'd be better for the council too to have this meeting or this presentation in, say, December or something like that. To where if you have questions, you, you know, you're in a situation now where you can't do much of anything. She's got to have her application, you know, based on a decision you make tonight, not, not with some feedback. Because I think one of the important issues that, you know, uh, Mr. Dawson has brought up is the question of the impression that we changed fundamentally because we were told we had to change the routes. And, and that, not, not that it was some sort of, uh, you know, cha, you know, because whatever happened, you, you, you decreased ridership by more than fifty percent and are paying the same thing. And, and, and I recall the present, I, I recall the understanding was, is that something about doing it like a cab service effectively was not within the scope of how the funding was supposed to be. And therefore, going back to a route service was to make it compliant with the underlying funding basis. And so I think that just that, if that, that's a simplified way of saying, just confirm that for the council and that probably answers the question. Because if that was in fact the case, then the very high ridership was, it might have been high and we might have compressed it and that might have changed it, but fundamentally, if we were never supposed to be that way, that was just a, a fictitious number in the first place.
So what I think took place was, and I'm not sure if you're on council, but the previous town manager, it was set up that, that this is what we were supposed to do. And I think he gradually just changed it without going through the steps. And it got to where it was a demand service when it really was, that's not what it was, that's not how the transit started out. When the transit started out, they had them make bus stops. He just kind of got off from doing that and didn't stick, stick to that route. And so again, when I had a compliance review, then I started questioning, meanwhile, we were doing the route the way we were doing it.
So are you saying that the prior town manager dictated how the, how, how, how it worked? Or that the, that Pulaski area transit did?
Oh, the transit manager.
The transit manager.
The transit manager.
So you're saying that the transit manager over time managed it to more of a, the, the, on-demand service?
Yes, and from, and didn't go through the process to get it to be like that.
I got, okay.
They did it, but it wasn't approved by our, by the people who did provide the majority of the funding. And then they said, no, and then you all said, okay, we'll, we'll get it back to what it's supposed to be. Because I mean, I do think, I mean, if, I mean, I don't think, if we can, if we can convince them that this is a viable model for our communities, it makes more, it might make more sense than what, you know, in Norfolk or Richmond or, or, you know, even a railroad would do because we just have a fundamentally different, you know, the.
Especially, what's the law, is it, does it cost any more money?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah, well, the problem is, is that, you know, like, it's not up to them. You know, if the law's written the way the law's written, and, you know, we just might have to go through and just ask them to say, can you make an exception for us? But we, we've shown that this way, the way we were doing, you know, within reason, some of this, but I don't know, we'd have to go back. Because it might not be, you might just say, you know, it might be straight written into the stat, the enabling statute that says it shall not be an on-demand service. So that happens sometimes.
And, and Monica, your, your new plan is a combination of the two. It is the demand response and the fixed route. And that, that's what the feeder routes will be, is just getting that accomplished.
Okay, so it's, so it's basically, if you don't live near, close enough to a bus, to a current stop, you'll call up transit and transit will bring you to?
To that, to the, to the route.
Oh, okay, so hopefully that will address this, this issue and to maximize sort of efficiency and ridership? That's the goal?
Right.
Those feeder places will not be on-demand though. You will have fixed places that those people will still have to go to to be brought in, is that correct?
Well, we haven't quite, exactly finished determining that. We've talked about having designated stops.
Right.
And we talked about like the ADA's if they call in a day or two before ahead of time and get on a schedule to be brought in and don't call that service stop. So we'll, we'll work up with the consultants on that.
Thank you.
I think.
Jennifer, sorry, she's a finance person.
Okay. But if you can keep us up to date on that, we'll, we do have to do that too.
Because I, I do think that, you know, I, I have heard many things from people about what it is and what it's not. And I feel like if, if, if my benefit, you all could have a little bit more communication about that stuff. And if, we're happy, I mean, I know, I send stuff to Jordan all the time to get put out on the town Facebook page and that, that kind of stuff. Anything we can do to help you communicate with your riders, we'd love to do.
That'd be great.
Especially, you know, like the senior center and stuff like that, I think that would be, you know, I'm sure you do a great job, but you always miss people.
Yeah, I, what I'll do is I'll just get, um, Candace Raper's my assistant, she takes care of our Facebook stuff, so I can just get her to start sending and sharing with Jordan too and.
Great. Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Monica.
All right, so we've got a motion on the floor, and we have a second, may I have a roll call for this please, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Mr. Clunks?
So.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, so at this time, let's, we'll get back to the council comments, so.
You have to listen.
Okay. Mr. Reese?
Uh, just two things, one of them, it's actually sort of dovetails actually kind of nicely with our current discussion. Um, I know we're starting into the budget process and one of the things that I sort of struggle with when I look at the budget, which the budget itself is great in that it details all the various lineups, but the problem is it's hard to understand the context of them. To give you an example, you know, we spend X number of dollars on transit and we're gonna get some more information on how much ridership and things like that. But I, and may, maybe this is available in, in during parts of the budget process that I just haven't been through. But, I mean, one of the things I'd like to understand is, you know, I can see how many hours, you know, how much money is going to, you know, wages for a various department. But I don't feel like I have a good grasp of what, what different roles and responsibilities and, and metrics are used by those departments to sort of figure out what, how they're funding them, you know? Something like an example is, I know we get a certain amount of street funding from the state, which I assume is based on miles of road of various kinds. And then that translates into X number of dollars, it translates into X number of positions, something along those lines. Is that fair, broadly speaking?
Well, it's more than salaries, it's actually the paid mon, you know, if we have contractors or if we put in payment, it's sidewalk money, it's all of those things.
Sure, 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 and, and I, I understand that it's not, I mean, I don't need, you know, I don't need all the, every, you know, journal entry. But I just want to be able to say, I know there's X number of people working on streets and so many of these people, and we have so many vehicles and, you know, just to have some, you know, it's hard to understand if, you know, we spend two million dollars on streets. I know, I, I can see what we're spending it on, it's very, you know, salaries, VRS payments, that kind of stuff. But I don't understand how that translates into like a job, you know? So, and the problem with that is that, you know, if, if, if somebody comes in and says, well, we need this much more money, I don't know, you know, besides, you know, there being some sort of, um, you know, presentation about that, I, you know, I don't know how that, how that, I don't know how, what I'm, what's the context for that, I guess is my question. And I don't know what's the most efficient way to do that, and I don't want to create like a million hours of work. But I feel like I, I'm, I'm approving a budget without really understanding what it's going to. Um, you know, I mean, I, I understand that, you know, no budget is perfect and that you every, but I just, I'm trying to figure out a way to sort of look at, you know, how we're, you know, because if I need, if you want to, we want to increase certain department budgets because we want to meet certain goals. you know, how we're, you know, because if I need, if you want to, we want to increase certain department budgets because we want to meet certain goals, you know, I want to understand what, how that works. Does that make sense? Is that, is that an unrealistic ask? That's just sort of.
Well, it's a yes and no, uh, because again, depends on the level of detail. But part of my rationale for sending you all the weekly report.
Right.
That I send to you and so that you know what staff is doing.
Right.
It doesn't quantify it for you over a year, you know, to say that we spent X number of hours emptying trash cans. Or we spent X number of hours, uh, with the cemetery mowing, which takes two people months when grass is growing. And that's hard to believe, but that's what it takes. But we haven't really quantified and said, two of these positions, seven months of the year are full-time, you know, in the cemeteries and so many, you know, percent of somebody else. But I had the feeling as I came into this position that the council really didn't have an appreciation for what staff was working on. And the truth is, if you're not traveling around the town all the time, you won't even see someone of what's going on. So that's another way for us to communicate to you all, uh, what we are about in any given week. And it also is a way, you see some things repeated because we're still working on an RFP for this, that, the other. Helps you see that some of these things take some time. Uh, but we can try to refine some of this as we go into, uh, budgets. I have said, for example, that we need a position control document. We don't really have that. So you don't see in the budget that we have four positions associated with a particular budget. You know, if I were to ask you all today, how many people do we have in finance?
Yeah, they, they, they're not quite accurate. I can see that you're doing a lot of work. But I have no way to evaluate, you know.
But then how can I, how you, one person works, and this is the level of detail, so it's the yes or no question. Do you want to know that eighty percent of one person's time is spent collecting water bills and twenty percent spent doing something else?
Well, the only reason I ask for that is because, you know, sometimes we're going to be asked to make large expenditures, like on a new accounting system or something like that. And so being able, i- if I've seen that, you know, somebody, we're, we're spending, we're paying somebody thirty thousand dollars a year to collect water bills. And if we pay for a fifteen thousand dollar, you know, accounting system, it would look, it would, it would free that person up to do other work.
Well, that's.
I mean, I could wrap my head around that.
And that's the kind of justification that if we do our budget right, you should be given if there's any change.
Okay.
Uh, but.
And so, yeah, that's, that's what I was trying to, because I just, you know, I'm new, so I don't know what I don't know.
But I, I'll say this, coming from someone who's very capable of getting in the weeds.
Yeah.
Now, I mean, I, you know, I'm certainly, you know, am capable of doing that myself. But I think our position, you know, we, we hire a town manager for a reason. That's, you know, Darlene's here to run the town. How Sean was supposed to be here to run the town. If we did a good job of hiring a town manager, then, you know, then the details are in her work. What we have to do a better job of as a council, in my opinion, and through Darlene, is we create the framework in which what she's supposed, that she works within. The five-year plan of where we want to be financially. The five-year plan of, you know, our budget projections as far as where, where our finances are going to be. What kind of money is that going to turn into? What are our goals with that money? And then she presents us, or the town presents us with a budget that, that matches up with where we're wanting to go.
Right, but I mean, kind of value, the problem is we can't evaluate that budget if we don't have goals and metrics to ju- and, you know, not everything has a goal and a metric. But, but there are some things, you know, minimize the number of, you know, water main breakages. You know, and quantify, you know, and say, you know, we need to invest in so many, you know, to spend all this money on replacing our aging water mains because it's taking up, you know, eighty percent of our, our street crews' time. You know, we're spending, you know, having some way to sort of rationalize that, but, you know. But I think the problem is i- if we don't have metrics and goals, then we're not, we're not really evaluating a budget beyond just gross numbers.
Right.
You know, but I want, I don't think it's fair to Darlene to come in and say, tell her, you know, you need to reduce the budget by ten percent without there being some rationale behind that. And if they're fit that, because that's not fair to her or an department to, to say that. But if we say, you know, we're not meeting these goals, something needs to change, you know? And if that, something needs changes, that we need to spend more money, then we need to spend more money. And if we need to relocate funding from, you know, you know, but I just don't know how to evaluate that without there being, you know.
Well, I'm personally convinced that the council, and maybe not the council as much, but the public, doesn't really understand how many, how few people you really have.
Right, and I know it's a little bit too impressive.
Uh, and then, you know, what they are responsible for doing. Uh, and I think you're really asking for two things, and I think we can accomplish them. I'm not sure we'll get them all done in one budget year, but I think we need to give you a sound basis of understanding. And maybe that is part of my position control and saying that, you know, it takes, you know, we're allocating, you know, X percent of these for these kinds of activities. And hopefully you're seeing some of that get translated when we roll up these weekly reports. And then the second thing is any changes that we make in the budget, other than reductions, because I think everybody likes to see that, is when we ask for more and then we ought to be able to justify to the council satisfaction that that additional amount is needed for these purposes and what will it achieve for us? Efficiencies, economies, eventually over three years, whatever it might be. That what my job is, in my opinion, is to make sure that the dollars that we have are spent, uh, as well as they can be. So that when we ask for more money, we can always answer the question. We've looked every way else to do this and this is what we have to do. Um, so let me see if we can't work on both of those. Give you all some better basis for understanding what's in the budget. And then clearly, uh, you should, um, be given adequate justification for any increase. Uh, what I would say to you is that, and I think Spencer was trying to say this, that it's unfortunate, uh, that you're asked to start making a budget decisions on outside agency well in advance of when you get a look at the full budget. Um, I actually, um, made contact, and I think this was in my memo to you all back in the early fall, uh, having read some minutes of council meeting, uh, and the questions that you all asked about transit, trying to get somebody in here so you could have a better answer to questions well in advance of the budget deliberation. And then got the same answer that you did about COVID's having, uh, COVID having delayed getting this consultant review. And it was me that prompted the meeting in December that had them here today. That had not been a request of, of the town. But then when I said, we need to get you in front of the council to answer these things, then she said, well, I've got to have an answer by February first. And I think you could have pushed back on that a little bit personally. But, um, that's the council's decision and I think you should resist until we do get into a full budget. Kind of these off the cycle requests. Because then you've already made decisions that impact the ability of other funding to be available for something you may decide later is, is needed more. And we are close to having probably by your February work session, um, a very interesting capital improvement program, five to seven years to show you what you're looking at. So there's going to be a lot of decisions you all are going to have to make. And we may have to have multiple work sessions in order to get through some of this stuff, depending on your appetite for information um, and how serious the budget situation is. So we'll just keep working at it. Um, but there's no one solution and you won't get it, I'm afraid, all in.
I don't know, that's okay. I, I just.
One bite.
I just wanted to make sure that that, I, 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 I don't know if anybody else has thought about that, but it's just something that I just, I look, I was looking at the budget from last year and I was thinking, I just, I mean, I, I, I approved it, but I didn't really understand it. And I don't feel like that's a, that's a fair position for that E staff and, or me, um, because I just don't think I'm productive. And then the other question I had is, um, I know that, you know, vaccinations are happening. And I hope that town employees have been, when appropriate, have been, you know, given, if they have. I believe, are town employees considered in 1B? Um, I mean, some.
All town employees who want to have vaccination have been con- have not only been contacted and received or are scheduled to receive vaccination. I will tell you that roughly only thirty percent of the town employees have at this point in time, um, asked to be vaccinated. Um, there is an allocation for what's called 1B that includes our employees. If they don't sign up now, they're going to have to wait into a later cycle. Uh, but that's, you know, a matter of personal preference. Uh, but, um, I am personally now, um, registering people for the town uh, who are interested. And I believe all of you all were contacted by Mary Ann to see if you wanted to be in that group. Um, and I can tell you that, uh, from my opinion, because I was vaccinated last Friday afternoon, uh, the operation by our health department, uh, for this area is superior. Um, I have a daughter who's also a city manager and her experience down in Tyler is, uh, abysmal compared to how well we are doing here. It's unfortunate, but the numbers, uh, are tracking higher. Um, but, um, anybody who wanted to or wants to up to this point to be vaccinated is able to do so.
Well, then, and then I guess the follow-up questions of that, has the, has there been any outreach from the health department or, or other agencies on doing some sort of mass vaccination event here in town? Um, I mean, I'm just, I know that ha- I just know it happened in Giles County. And I'm just thinking, we're, we're talking about transit and people having difficulty getting access. You know, we've got older, you know, people of limited mobility. Has there been, I mean, is there, has there?
There's.
If there hasn't, that's okay. I'm just trying to.
There hasn't been the mass kind of thing that did happen, uh, in, uh, at least one, if not two other communities. Our senior center, uh, has been transporting seniors, uh, to get vaccinations.
Right.
Uh, we are waiting for the local pharmacy martins to, uh, start making, uh, vaccination available. But we haven't.
I believe they have.
Have they now? Okay.
Yeah. As of, as of last week is all I know.
Uh, they were certainly announced that they were going to be able to, but we haven't heard. I'll check that in the morning.
And Food City too?
Pardon?
And Food City too?
I heard that Food City was doing. Just the store, you manage all of them?
One, if you ask him.
Okay. But there has been no mass one scheduled, uh, up to this point.
Okay.
That I'm aware of. But I think, uh, it's going very well from the standpoint of what vaccinations we have available.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I had a opportunity to speak to the chamber, um, last Monday. Um, and it was for the whole chamber. And I had some, um, five minutes to be able to speak to them and inform them of the stuff that's been going on with us, with our COVID, um, um, CARES money, um, us hiring Darlene, um, we hired Brady Deff, uh, deal. Um, we hired, uh, Jordan Witt. We've hired a whole lot of people and we've put a lot of money back into the community with the CARES money, um, seven hundred thousand dollars worth. And I want to, you know, again, thank the county for giving us that money. Um, it's been a very trying year, my first term, but I wouldn't trade it for the world. I love it. Um, but, I mean, I think that the town has been doing very well. Um, I appreciate, um, Darlene more than she knows. Um, she's gotten a lot of stuff started that has been good. Um, stuff that's not seen in the public all the time. And I wish people would just remember that, that it's not, everything is not what you perceive on the outside. Um, you've got to see the stuff that's going on in the background too. And, you know, there's been a lot of hard questions that's been asked. And she stood to the, she stood up to it. And I want people just to give her a chance. Because our town is a beautiful town and we need to get it back like it was. Um, but just, you know, give us all a chance. Pray for our town because we're doing wonderful things and we're going to, we're going to come back. Um, I feel like Kielaski's like a phoenix. You know, we've been down and we're ready to rise out of the flames. So I just want to thank her. I want to thank all of the employees. Um, I think we've got a really good crew here, um, all of them actually. Just want to thank everyone. And now we'll just move on to Ms. Irvin for your manager's report.
Well, we need to go back and you all need to, if you're prepared to, have your discussion about the recommendation from the planning commission.
That's right.
Um, and as I indicated, uh, we do have an ordinance drafted, uh, that would approve the recommendation. But again, that's up to the council. We can modify it. You don't have to approve it. But, uh, the way I'm used to handling matters like this is to have a resolution or ordinance ready for that. Um, of course, you don't need an ordinance if you reject it. And if you wanted to modify it, as was some of the conversation earlier, uh, you could always, uh, tell us that in your motion and, uh, the clerk could write that in. And then we could have it typed up, uh, and signed, uh, tomorrow, you know, if it was approved. So, um, I think we may have cut off your discussion a little bit early. And I want to make sure that the council has an adequate opportunity to, uh, discuss further if you need to. The recommendation from the planning commission as well as your thoughts about the presentation as you've heard it earlier this evening.
Just to clarify that the section in the ordinance, the four dot ten dot two bash two is for special exemptions? It doesn't say special exemption on the amendment. Special, is that any special exemption for you? The one down there for being.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's all special exceptions. Although it's actually, oh yeah, I see now. Yeah, that's right. Um, yeah, it's one of those special exceptions. There's several. Animal hospital, pet shop, recreation amusement establishments, job researches, several.
We ready to.
So, so, and giving this some additional thought, I'm, I'm sitting here. We have the opportunity, um, and I, and I think from what some of you have said, that, uh, on Main Street, uh, apartment living is, is not something that we desire. I think I heard Luke say the same thing. So leaving that door open is something we don't have to do. Which if we accept this as written, that's what we're doing. We're leaving that door open for future folks to debate whether they have a, an apartment on Main Street. And as Luke, you know, alluded to, you know, you walk down the street and you see somebody sitting on a couch watching TV, which I'm not, I don't think we want on Main Street. Um, so I would feel more comfortable with the, with the, and, and again, the ground floor units are fine. Certainly the way, uh, it was presented in an alley or, uh, or behind the buildings. Uh, I certainly don't see any issue with that. And I'm glad someone's taken an interest, uh, in potentially doing that kind of development. But I would be more comfortable with, uh, zoning amendment to amend section blah blah, to permit dwelling units on, on, uh, the off-Main Street ground floor or some variant thereof. That's a little, a little wordy, but, uh, I would, I would like to box that into where folks looking at the potential for a special exception will, will not consider, you know, will not feel like they have an opportunity to, to put a dwelling directly on Main Street.
Could you just say to the rear of the ground floor?
Well, but what's the rear? That, that, I mean, I mean, you, you, you want to, if you want to be clear, I mean, I think the, 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 the issue is you don't want it to face Main Street.
Right, exactly.
I mean, but do you, I mean, I, I think, this. I mean, but do you, I mean, I think, this, this applies to other areas besides just Main Street, right?
It's a large section.
Whatever, B three is not that.
Yeah.
Central business district.
So I mean, you know, I mean, I think, I think you, I think you, the issue you're running into is gonna be partially wanted just worded. How do you add that language? I mean, you say dwelling units are permitted on the ground floor, comma, so long as they don't face, you know, a main road?
And, and see, the thing is too, it's unfavorable that if we choose to go that way. But with the same time of it requiring special exception and being worried that future councils may be allowing that as a special exception, they could also, future council could also amend this again.
They, they.
So, like I said, I'm fine with doing it, but at the same time, if that's the reason that we're doing it.
It's gonna, it's not gonna be, you know, I think the thing is, it's not quite right, you know, and it's subject to or limited by conditions. I mean, it still has to come through, you know, and, I mean, I understand your point. I just think, I just don't have, I don't have a right to, to be honest with you.
It has to go through planning commission and then still has to get approved by.
Yeah.
Right.
So that's both bodies that have to be okay with it.
Well, though, you don't have to, a council does not have to accept the recommendation of planning commission.
Right.
So you are free tonight or any other time to reject or amend a recommendation on the planning commission as well as approve it. So don't feel like any special exception obviously has to go through the planning commission, so they have to deliberate it. But don't feel like they have to approve it in order for you to approve it or that both bodies have to approve it for it to be effective. I just wanna make sure that's clarified.
A question about the, what are the units of permitted on the ground floor?
Of a mixed use activity.
That, that could be these anywhere.
No, it, it, it's under a section called commercial uses. So it's only, I think it's only applicable to commercial built.
Mixed use built, mixed use.
Mixed, they're mixed use building, yeah. I mean, I could be wrong, but that's why I'm, Spencer?
But it's subject to section four point one zero point two dash two, which states the commercial building and the location of the building.
Well, I think there was some legitimate, I think one of the planning commission folks said, if I look at the map of, of B three, I'm pretty sure we already have some ground level apartment housing in, that's already in that area.
Yeah.
And part of that, the point she said is it might, might not be approved housing in that area. It may be that there are some situations that might need to be handled as considering whether that's, whether they're complying with the zoning, if that's the case. So I, I would say that you, you may wanna, you may wanna have an evaluation of whether those are appropriately done rather than make a decision based on them if they're not appro, if, if they, if they're violating the zoning ordinance, you need to address that. Unless you wanna consider changing, I don't know that you wanna consider approving something as a special exception because it's there if it's violating the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, the other reason not to change the, to not allow ground level dwellings is that it changes the calculus. I mean, you know, we wanna encourage commercial development, but if you're a landlord, you know, residential is typically, there's a higher value per square foot, you know, for most landlords. It's easier because you just sell it, you know, sell it or rent it or whatever and it's, there's a, so there's a, there's a negative incentive if we're trying to encourage commercial development in downtown to allow a ground floor dwellings.
And actually, many, many years ago, communities did not even allow upper floor development unless it was a residence associated with the retail operation below. So this idea of having upper floor living is a relatively new phenomena in a lot of communities. And the rental units oftentimes pay for the expense of the retail below. And it's one of the reasons why people go into upper floor, because that then is the income that they need to make the whole property actually work. So the real question is, you know, whether or not having additional units on the ground floor is also a reasonable approach.
To Mr. Penn's question, and now I'm, I'm reading this, and so it says mixed use buildings, you know, see, they're mixed use building lodging facility and multifamily dwellings as part of the mixed use development. Wouldn't, wouldn't what Luke and company were proposing, wouldn't that be a mixed use facility?
Yeah.
So therefore, that, that last sentence to Mr. Penn's point, dwelling units are permitted. So it says, these are the facilities, mixed use buildings, dwelling units are permitted on the ground floor. It doesn't, I'm just, I guess this.
Well, but the current ordinance says are not permitted.
They're prohibited.
Yeah, they're prohibited, so.
Even if you get a special use exception for a mixed use building, you still can't put an apartment on the ground.
Today, you cannot do it.
Right, correct. And this is by the way a special exception.
Yeah, the whole, the whole mixed use is a special exception.
That, that'll, okay, I, I'm, I'm with you there. I, I still, any suggestions regarding wording? I, I know, I don't wanna beat this to death, and here's the, here's the thing. When, when, before the ordinance were said prohibited, they were very tight, there was no flexibility there. And I think that's a good way of governing, that you kind of, you kind of restrict it, because you're trying to, to guide the path. As we see it today, you're trying to guide the growth through the expansion of your town. We certainly want that, absolutely want that. But you wanna, you know, you wanna kind of, I would think you wanna write your ordinances in alignment with how you would like to see it go and not leave that door open. Even though it is, it's not as wide open. If a future council wants to change it and say, okay, we wanna, we wanna specifically allow a dwelling on Main Street, you know, right next to a retail space, then they have to consciously make an effort to change the existing ordinance or reconstruct it. And maybe I'm, maybe I'm in the weeds because I'm guilty of that too sometimes, but.
It may be that you wanna take a step back and say, not that you'd wanna get this, I hadn't thought it through, but this detail, but it may be that you want to consider creating a different zone altogether for your Main Street property. You know, the, the B three district is a lot bigger and there may be more issues that you're concerned. What, what you're really articulating here is that your concern is on Main Street. And even if it's by special exception, if you start down that path, you may create something, you know, that, that could be problematic later. But Main Street is a part of a much bigger district in which that, that you're, that you're applying this. Now, you could say, well, we're just not, as a council, gonna really approve, you know, special exceptions on Main Street. But I think you, you might wanna just think that through. Is, is it just that the Main Street is your concern? Is it, is it Third Street you're concerned? What are the buildings you're talking about? Because again, here, again, it is limited to the mixed use buildings. So it's not to say that it outright could be residential use. But you, you, you wanna think through the area that you're trying to protect the character of the area and the business. In a large, like, like Darlene said, a lot of times, and I thought our town was like this, I could be misremembering it, but that for, for a long period of time, that the apartments upstairs in any of these buildings were, were tethered to the owner of the building and it was, and who also used the building for, you know, for their business purpose. I think that, that the one shop, you know, the, the, this, I forget what Marley's is.
Upstairs downstairs.
Upstairs downstairs, it's like that. And, and then for, for years, you didn't see anything upstairs in those places because they didn't have that, that permit. And then you, then, because it does bring in, to question the whole issue about what you're trying to do with those spaces. I think another thing that we have to look really carefully about is where we had this large CDBG grant about this facade improvement is whether, you know, is those facades are for businesses? And, and that money that came in through that grant process, that, that there's no complicating features of that for that. And then the whole question, you said, well, it needs to be going out the backside of the business. I guess you could make an independent decision on approving the special exception for a particular tax parcel. And, and, but, and then when they ask for a building permit, you may be able to look at that. I think we, it's probably better off to take a step back and make sure we understand what all of the consequences would come from that. Is that seem fair, Darlene? Because again, your, the focus here is, is really Main Street with the alley behind it.
Well, how far, I was looking for my map, I don't have it, you have it in front of you, Brock. How far does the B three go? Because it's just supposed to be the downtown business district.
I mean, it, I mean, it goes all the way up to the library, you know, the street across from the, you know, the other side of the street from the courthouse. I mean, the, all those, I mean, there's apartment buildings listed as B three. I know they have ground floor apartments in them. I'm looking, the corner of Third and Washington.
But an apartment building is not a mixed use facility, and that's the difference.
And so it's allowed to be in B, so it's B three.
It's a commercial, it's a commercial, when it's an apartment building, it's not a commercial building, because it's a residential building. So it's not being used, so it's only when you're mixing commercial space with the residential space that this exception comes in, because those apartment buildings, and I, I mean, there's several apartment buildings in downtown. Those are, as Darlene's point, those are residential and not commercial. Even, I mean, I assume, that, that's, that's my read of what you're saying, right?
Also, from the commercial side, then, it's not just Main Street. I mean, you've got, you know, Washington Avenue's got tons of, you know, commercial fronts on it, you know, and, I mean, every one of those streets has commercial fronts on it somewhere.
But the only time it would apply is if it is a mixed use. Because if it's a retail operation only, doesn't have any living in it, even upstairs, then this exception would not be needed. It's only when you are, in effect, combining in a single building, two different types of uses.
Right, but anyone who had interest in this exception would be trying to combine.
Right.
So if somebody wanted to convert one of these commercial buildings into a residential building, they could do that, they could put a, a residential unit on the first floor, if it was a residential only building.
Through exception.
That wouldn't be an exception, because it wouldn't be applied, because it wouldn't be a commercial building.
It would still have to be changed, the code, the.
I'd have to see that, I'd have to pull the B three requirements to see, I don't think B three allows single family residential or any kind of residential use by itself.
Well, it says that it allows residential use, but I don't see an apartment building in it anywhere.
There's definitely apartment buildings in B three.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, there's a few. And there's one across the street from the courthouse apartment lot. That's, that's on Third Street.
Permitted use, residential use as a single family dwelling is in, it is a by right use, but it is a single family dwelling.
So you couldn't, but you couldn't turn it into an apartment building?
Well, it is, it's, single family dwelling is a permitted use. I'm, I'm still looking through to see what you're saying about an apartment building, but the four point, section four point ten point two point one permitted uses, the very first thing, it says residential uses, single family dwellings. And then it says such dwellings will be permitted in conjunction with a permitted office business or commercial use in the same building or on the same premises for use by a proprietor or employee of such business. So that kind of takes care of that mixed use thing that Darlene was suggesting, but it didn't say anything about, you know, ground floor or now if, whether that's defined elsewhere. Now, when you're talking about, let's see. It doesn't, doesn't necessarily otherwise say anything about the apartment buildings as a quick use. So that's why I'm kinda saying we might wanna, after hearing the discussion, it seems like it would be good to consider tabling the matter, preparing the questions you may have to review it and, and address it in a layer, rather than this very specific thing, you may wanna do, but you wanna understand what, you know, fully what, what it is you're approving, that's it.
And I think you're right, I think in the context that it was presented, I think it's perfectly acceptable and it's something that we wanna do. In the context of thirty seven West Maine. But as you said, Spencer, looking at the bigger picture and then just with this conversation, I think maybe tabling it is, is the right thing to do. There's, there's no sense of urgency on this.
Well, they have to go through.
They have to, I think they, that was from, this was provided by BDHA. And BDHA, I think one of them could do this if they could proceed, because this is gonna be key to their getting funding.
They also still have to go through another set of hearings, if and when this is approved, however you approve it.
Yeah.
To then get the special exception approval to have anything on the ground floor. Assuming that you tighten, you know, if you wanna tighten up this issue, they still have got to go through another set of hearings.
If, if, if the special exception isn't approved, they won't get, they won't, they won't get funding for their plan with the three units in the back.
Well, and, and I think.
I mean, they won't even get, they won't even get, they won't put an application in because, I'm guessing, because they just don't have funding.
Right, and, and I'm not suggesting we don't, we don't do that, I'm just, I, I.
How hard would it be just to name, you're not talking about a ton of streets here? Or could, could we just name the streets that we didn't want, those first four dwellings to be facing?
Yeah.
You're only talking about six streets or something.
I need to review that to make sure.
Yeah, I'm not sure you can add the special exception without it going through.
Where we can specifically say, hey Luke, we don't want.
We'd have to.
Yeah, no, I mean, if we're, we're making, we're making, it's a special exception and I think we can limit that exception, right? I mean, there's no reason we can't.
But I think you limit it at the point that you have the request for the special exception, not at this point.
Like, not in the ordinance itself that you're naming streets within the zone, it's, it's that you're making decisions about the streets within the zone as you go along. I, I just don't, I just don't wanna rush through it and do something that we, we can at least think it through and if we need to address it at the next meeting, I think we can.
Or we could craft something for a future, you know, depending on how you wanna act on, you could act on this one and then we could ask the planning commission, because they're the ones that should start it, to offer an amendment that would limit which streets within B three would be enabled to do this. So you might be, I'd say, three months away from having that change that would limit further, you know, the streets. But then this particular application, if again, and I'm not trying to judge, you're interested in moving forward, you could take care of this one when you actually have a special exception come before you in a month or two. And then we could work on whatever change you want to limit in the language of B three where this special exception could be utilized.
So what you're saying is that you don't necessarily see an issue with approving this, especially if we're already looking at amend, maybe create, amending it altogether. So approving it tonight, but then planning to amend it.
And as I said, John would say that you send back to the planning commission the fact that you are concerned that B three encompasses a larger area than West Maine that you are interested in, will support, I'm making this up for you. This particular one moving to the special exception stage, but you want the planning commission to offer you language in the future that would limit where that special exception might be applied. And we could bring forward that language, which would be another amendment to the zoning ordinance.
I'm comfortable with that. In three month time period, this council will still be sitting, if there was a, a second, second special exemption that came across the board before it got fixed, then.
I wish I could tell you, we've got one way to get rings that we need to go faster, but I don't see it happening in that period of time. I hope that I'm proven wrong.
As far as, as far as the motion goes, approve this ordinance, would it be with? As far as, as far as the motion goes, to approve this ordinance, would it be with with that caveat?
I think you move it as written, and then we would, and then we would, we would just provide, we would ask Darlene to to request that the planning commission provide us with some language limiting it, and then we'll, you know, and we'll provide some additional detail with a little bit more thought.
I I think you guys think that.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I think we should table this ordinance for a time here.
But if we table it, then they won't get their funding for.
Well, I mean, that, I mean, I don't know, I I don't know how urgent it is for them, but, you know, we can.
I don't know, their timetable, as I said, they do still have to go back with a new application for the special exception. Which will take, if if you all approve something tonight, they might hit the next planning commission meeting, which would be the second Monday in February. If I look at a calendar, they might make that. If you don't do anything tonight, there'll be at least March before they would be able to ask for the special exception of the planning commission. If you wanted to clean up the language here, I would say it's gonna take the planning commission, you know, a month or two to to do that. To Mr. Penn's comment, if you want this particular project to go forward, I think you could go ahead with that, and we could still do it. But I understand what you're also saying about you'd rather wait, you know, and get it all done at the same time.
The only concern about this part of, uh part C, you change that.
What do you want changed there?
What is, what I see is one use of it anymore.
Hey, but that that whole, and I I was with you on that, Mr. Penn, that whole, that whole paragraph is under the context of a special.
Yeah, a special exception.
It just doesn't say, oh, that's what I was looking for, no. It's that that paragraph has to be approved by this council before they would be able to.
To then go and ask for the special.
Yes, we have to approve and change it to the to the language before they can even ask us to do anything. So I mean, I I'm gonna, do this, do you wanna go say anything?
No, I'm good.
Um I'm gonna move that we approve the ordinance that is drafted, I understand the reservations about that, and then also ask that Darlene um get some proposed language from the planning commission uh about ways that we can limit that application in the ordinance or other ways.
And the limitation would be to the West Main Street at this point?
Yeah.
That is covered under the B three. Is that correct?
Yeah.
I understand what you're saying.
What's at the back of the building?
Under the, yeah, under the B three.
No, I'm facing. Right.
Yeah. I mean, and and just, if they can provide like some maybe some options, and, you know, whenever they.
And we, and we need, and I kinda got tunnel vision, we need to understand how that affects B three in its entirety. And Spencer clarified that for me, because I was kind of focused on Main Street, but there's a lot of other B three out there, so.
Why don't we make sure that we send out to you all, if you don't have it, um this week of copy of what is B three and maybe remind even the planning commission, you know, the bigger context. Because I think sometimes you're focused on just the one application that's in front of you, that you may be very supportive of, but not thinking about what else might come to you in the future. I think it's been a good discussion, and again, refining things as they come to.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. And may I have a roll call for that, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn?
Hello.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Eas?
Aye.
Mr. Clance?
Aye.
Mr. Eas?
Aye.
Well, I guess we'll move on to Ms. Darlene now.
All right, well, I'm I'm afraid to say anything since the mayor was so kind in his remarks. Uh but I do think uh that the community often misunderstands roles of all of us that are sitting here uh in the meeting tonight. The mayor, because, you know, he has ceremonial responsibilities, so he's seen out a lot, uh and uh your town manager, whoever that might be, just because that person is the one implementing uh the council's policies, not making decisions, but implementing them. And they don't really understand and appreciate that the town manager really doesn't or shouldn't do anything that the council doesn't support or approve, and that there is a decision-making process. So I would be interested in the council at a future uh time sharing with both Jordan and I uh ways that we can somehow educate the public in a better way to understand what the process is, you know, that this is a council manager form of government, uh so the council is the legislative uh body. Um and there may be situations that you all have run into with citizens or groups that you could share with us as ways that we could get that message out. Uh because it really is all of us working together, and I was pleased that the mayor mentioned the staff, because in the time that I've been here, I think your staff has been very responsive to a lot of changes uh that I have made and a lot more that I will make. Uh we just mentioned a couple uh that we have looked at that I think will deal with this efficiency issue. Uh one of which is to um require all new employees to go into direct deposit, and that may sound like something that's simple, but it really has an effect on the amount of time that's spent on the payroll function. We're also automating uh the check writing function uh that right now requires two signatures, when those can be done with plates, because by the time you're ready to write a check, there already been several approvals. So we're, we're adapting to change and trying to find those efficiencies. Uh the mayor mentioned a couple of uh new hires, and we have made some good ones. Uh we've also now hired a young lady to be our human resource person, and she will report uh the first of February, and I would expect in the next several months that you're gonna see a major overhaul of our personnel policies. Uh the last time there was a major change was two thousand and six. Um and there are a lot of things there, some of which I mentioned to you all some months ago, I would like uh to bring to your attention. So that'll be coming, and I've already mentioned uh in some earlier remarks uh in response to Mr. Reese's concerning questions about budget, that I hope uh by your February work session to have a draft, very rough draft, uh the capital improvement plan for multi-years for you all to take a look at, some of the things that are needed um and help us to prioritize those, and that'll help us really go into the budget process in an aggressive way. Again, I think we have uh prepared uh the town buildings um and the town staff in every way we possibly can to make sure that our employees are safe and that our citizens are safe. Uh we had the ductwork cleaned in this building over the holiday. Unfortunately, uh we have had to temporarily close the senior center uh because of some of the problems that we encountered with the heating and ventilation system when we looked at that. We're looking right now uh to possibly uh relocate that to an alternative uh location once we can determine the extent of uh the work that needs to be done. Uh but Amy, uh who does an adm- admirable job with her seniors, uh called every one of them today and made them aware uh of that closure, and we'll certainly keep them uh involved and knowledgeable. And I would just say to you that kind of like the transit system, a lot of people just don't use uh the same communication ways that other people do. Putting something on Facebook doesn't help people that are, you know, in in their senior years oftentimes, and we have, you know, some that are in their nineties that are probably walking and talking better than I do, but they don't communicate in the same way. So phone call is the best way to talk to people. And so we do have staff that are extending themselves to really make sure uh that we can be as responsive as possible in this environment. So appreciate the support that um I've gotten. I'm glad to see that you all were eager to have another meeting after getting a break from one. I had several of you here early, uh just chomping at the bit to be a part of this, and I want to include you all in as many ways as I can. I do communicate frequently with you all by email, and I would just ask you to don't have to answer me, but just make sure that you're looking at that every couple of days, because I'm trying to make sure that I don't proceed uh in a way that the council would not be supportive of. Uh so I do take the time to report out some of these things, uh some of the changes that I'm making. But thank you for your continued support.
I will say, having been here for some time, having the pleasure of serving on council, I think now is probably one of the most uh fluid lines between what this council is doing and and where the rubber meets the road, so to speak, and it is, you know, as best as, you know, what our instruction goes to you, and then that is is, you know, disseminated among staff, and where it becomes a reality. Um I I think it's probably the most efficient I've seen it since I've been on council, and that's been a that's been a real pleasure so far.
Well, we we'll keep working at it.
Yeah, so we appreciate it.
That's it.
All righty. Well, with that, I would just like to remind everyone that our next future council meeting will be February second, twenty twenty one. And in the council chambers here, a closed session starts at five thirty, public session starts at seven. Um then February sixteenth, twenty twenty one will be our work session, starting at five, public session at six thirty. And if I can get.
Me, you heard.
And I'm ready.